Thank you. Uh, first item, uh, is, um, citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments? Oh, excuse me, yeah, roll call. Um, how's it going?
Commissioner Roth. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Nocida.
Here.
Commissioner Mom.
Hi.
Commissioner Neely.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Yates.
Here.
Commissioner Edgar.
Here.
And she, uh, Vice Chair Walters. Here.
Okay, uh, moving on to citizen comments. Yes. Okay, um, thank you. We've got, um, another commenter, Dan Fowler.
Um, I did, Dan Fowler, Oregon City. Good evening. Welcome new members. Um, the, um, my comments, um, have to obviously do with the item later on in the agenda tonight. And it really has to do with process. I've written, um, uh, an earlier memo that, has that been distributed or, yeah, it could be. Um, and my concern is, uh, twofold. And, uh, one is just, uh, I'm not sure why there is a special meeting. Um, but, but it's here. Um, I don't know if there's even a criteria in calling it a special meeting. But, uh, tonight, I'd like, um, my comments are really, uh, surround process in that, um, I know that there are some by past efforts, obviously for, very passionately for the, um, item in terms of voting on bond expenditures for urban renewal. And I appreciate various opinions and it really doesn't bother me that people hold maybe a different view than I have. My comments specifically though are on the process that we seem to be going about, or that some seem to be going about in having that be adopted. And I think there are a lot of questions surrounding it. Many of those I put in my, in my memo. And I believe that, um, when you're changing a charter, uh, speed is not necessarily a good quality, that time is important so that thoroughness happens. And many of you that have just recently been appointed have been on neighborhood associations, involved in different committees of the city, and I think have always appreciated the process of participation. So my concern is that that still happened. And, uh, there are other questions I have that really deal with the charter I'd like to maybe hold off. I'm not sure if you're going to allow public comment later or not. But my beginning comment is really that, uh, in terms of process. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me Nancy, we need two more of what Dan passed out. We didn't get later.
We'll have to charge a quarter of coffee for those. So, my name is Dan Fowler. I live in Oregon City. Um, I, I have a question to preface my statement and, uh, and, and it's to, uh, to, to Commissioner Roth. Would you agree that the, uh, Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron are the de facto keepers of the records for the tribes of this area?
Not possibly, not, not, unfortunately, but possibly.
Okay. So, mu- moving on to my statement then, um, it, it's come to my attention that earlier this month, uh, Commissioner Roth, either in her position as, uh, a city commissioner or as an urban renewal commissioner, contacted the real estate manager of Cabela's and made a couple of statements, and, and this comes from a meeting that, uh, a few of us had with, uh, with Fred Bruning and his staff last Friday. And, and two of the statements were, "We don't want you. You must be crazy to try to come here." And "Did you know that there are 300,000 Native Americans buried at the Rossman Landfills?"
Excuse me, Dan. Excuse me. All of that is not correct. All three statements.
Well, I, I, I don't know what to tell you except that these are direct quotes from Mr. Bruning. And it, it is in writing, and these are, so. More importantly, I must ask and, 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 and say to you folks that it is really important to understand that neither, no one of you has the authority or the responsibility to make statements for the others. That statements to companies or to organizations really need to come as a, as a group decision. And I would hope that you would make a resolution or, uh, board rules that would describe that so that you guys can all follow those kinds of, of points. I have a, uh, a memo today that I got from the Confederate tribe of the Grand Ron. And it says, "Confederate tribe of the Grand Ron community of Oregon's Cultural Resources Department have reviewed our databases and historical cultural information in regards to the area detailed in the information provided." Information provided was the actual legal description of the river site. "We have no archaeological cultural sites in this area. Specifically, questions were made about potential burials in this area, and the tribe has no record of any burials in this area. If the project area moves, please feel free to com- com- contact me to provide more information." So I would encourage you to, um, look at the Oregon League of Cities last, uh, you know, in January, they always, uh, print a, a copy of their, uh, newsletter that talks about rules and responsibilities for new commissioners or new city councilors. And I would encourage you, uh, all, all of the new members to look at that and, and review what you should do, what you shouldn't do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate your reminder, um, and ask that everybody refrain from, um, um, speaking hearsay in the public hearing. That would be, I think, a good thing for everyone. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, um, the next agenda topic is future agenda items. Uh, okay.
Was it item five D now?
Yeah, um, are you addressing item five D now?
Uh, no, we haven't, uh, this is item two, citizen comments.
Okay, this required.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to item three, future agenda items. Do you have, um, Q and A? Commissioner Nocida?
Brian Boyce, uh, who is a newly elected chair of the Clackamas Basin, um, Clackamas River Basin Council, has, uh, assembled a very detailed, um, slide presentation on the issues surrounding, um, uh, water and the, um, water levels in the cove and up and down the Clackamas River. Um, last year I had requested, um, for suggestion that he give a presentation to the Urban Renewal Commission, and I'd like to, um, request that as the future agenda item.
What's the other presentation again?
Um, I don't know how he titled it, but the, the presenter's name is Brian Boyce.
Okay.
The chair, newly elected chair of the Clackamas River Basin Council.
Lead discussion.
I have a question. I don't know if that's a different presentation or he's changed it since, uh, you initially brought that up, Commissioner Nocida, and I, I, uh, sent that out electronically to all the commissioners that were then commissioners. There may be some new data though since, since that, but that was about six months back, seven months. So I do know who this person is and he's met with our staff before. And the commissioner wants us to invite him here to give that presentation, or we can send it again electronically, your preference, doesn't matter to us.
I'd like the part of publicly see it.
Oh, sure. So, does the commissioner want that?
Okay.
We'll do it.
Commissioner Neely?
Um, the, uh, the next commission meeting, which is Wednesday, I'm going to be announcing that I intend to bring forward a motion at the second meeting of this month, which I believe is the 16th, is that right? Uh, that the city commissioner invite Senator Cal to submit their, formally submit their, uh, request for a, DDA to the Urban Renewal Commission.
Uh, I would like to, uh, suggest that we reschedule, um, a work session that was originally planned for October, um, to address questions, um, particularly regarding rivers project and other alternatives. I believe, um, there are several, um, other points of view that, uh, we haven't heard yet. And I would also like to invite, um, Charlie Stevens to come and speak to our group about jobs and about economic development. And I would like to also have a representative from DEQ, uh, who is knowledgeable about the site and its, um, condition and, uh, is able to, uh, explain to us, uh, what kind of mitigation measures are anticipated for, um, uh, the development agreement that, uh, I think calls for, um, that mitigation plan that is six months.
Just so, just so I remain clear, um, we're, what are, what are the timelines for this? Is this at the staff's discretion to try to get these folks available and, or does the commission want to send out the request, or you want me to do that? Or does it have to be worded in a particular way so that I, I don't want to be left to guess how that's supposed to happen, so?
If, if folks are, hopefully I'll be glad to extend the invitation, um, or we can have staff do it. Um, I would like to have the work session scheduled for when we're going to have our new, um, commissioners here because we haven't really had any discussions with our new commissioners about the rivers project. And, um, obviously it's an important project for all of us. There's a lot of public money at stake. And, um, I, I think it's important that we have a full conversation.
So, given that we know that Commissioner Yates is going to be out of town for a month, you're thinking sometime in March?
Well, probably the person to ask would be, uh, Commissioner Yates.
Um, I'd, I'd be amenable to a work session, um, just securing the dates from the only booth me.
I'm sorry.
I'm amenable to a work session. It's just, it's just a matter of setting a specific date.
Right.
Well, if I might, generally when we set these up, we try to contact the, like, in this case, we have Mr. Boyce, we have Mr. Stevens. And I didn't catch all of that last part about a DEQ rep. But depending on their availability, I mean, that will a lot of times guide, uh, when they can come, if that's the purpose of having your meeting. So, um.
Well, perhaps we want to schedule more than one meeting, maybe a couple of work sessions?
Any direction from the commissioner?
On, on the Brian Boyce's issue, I was thinking that more in terms of a regular meeting than a work session. I mean, it really doesn't matter that, that, that's, um, I don't know if work sessions are broadcast. But, um, I know as far as Mr. Boyce's, um, um, presentation, I prefer that be done, you know, in a regular.
Well, wha- what I would like to suggest that, if the commissioners believe this is, um, okay, is that we simply try to get all of the people that you've identified. And I only have two so far, but there might be somebody from DEQ you have in mind. Uh, if you do, let me know that. But I would, I would assume then that you want me to do this as soon as it can be done. Uh, at a regular scheduled work session unless you have a special date in mind. And if you do, tell us what that is.
It comes down to, do you want to wait until after March or do you want to do it in February? How soon do you want the information? Well, I think it would be fine to have the DEQ information, um, come in sooner. Uh, if we can get that part of our regular scheduled, are we, are we meeting twice in February? I don't even know what the schedule is, so.
Exactly. That's, that's my point. We normally have these meetings at, it's, I think your tradition here has been to consider your city commission dates as a regular date for your regular meetings, which could also be work sessions.
Okay.
So you don't have to view business per se at your regular meetings. They can be work sessions, and you've done that in the past. So I think we are, unless you instruct us otherwise, going to assume that the city commission calendar dates are the dates that regular urban renewal commissions will be held.
Right.
Unless there's a different set of circumstances like tonight. So we will work with those dates and try to get those people at the very, at the very earliest opportunity if that's acceptable.
Would it be acceptable for the people that are unable to attend to watch the video, um, presentation?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Well, uh, it looks like we have several things to work with. Um, and I guess if there are no, um, business discussion topics, then we can just have a work session.
And, um, could you clarify again what from DEQ you're wanting to know? Because they're going to ask me, "What do you want from us?"
Um, I think that we want to know inform, some information about the Rossman landfill. Yeah, I want it, um, you know, some kind of characterization, what kind of, um, what kind of hazard does it pose? Um, what, what kind of work, you know, what's the last, um, reconnaissance, uh, that's been done on that site to assess?
Sure.
Uh, what, what that landfill is doing.
Okay, that's very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
We have to finish the discussion with this.
Uh, maybe we can take it up during the, uh, the topic.
Well, the topic really doesn't have to do with rivers, so, uh, the topic has to do with, uh, questions, and thanks for talking. I, I wanted to comment if I might. I have a little reminder.
Thank you.
Anyway, um, there's two things. Bringing forward, bringing forward a, uh, disposition and development agreement does not preclude any of these things from happening. In fact, they would happen. Uh, and I think the scheduling of them jointly is fine. Uh, I don't think we've ever had a major development agreement come before us in which there was a lot of discourse on part of an urban renewal commission. Uh, just because it comes forward, it won't, I can't, I can guarantee you, under no conditions would have, had been voted for the same days it is submitted. I anticipate that various questions are going to be asked about it. And probably the same kinds of questions that you're requesting affirmation on. Uh, in terms of the, uh, Mr. Gray, in terms of the development agreement, uh, Commissioner Roth had sent out a memorandum regarding a DEQ study at that particular site. And probably the best thing is for DEQ to, to address the kinds of issues that were in, in that report.
Yeah, yeah, I have all the direction I need on getting DEQ here and what, what it is, I think, the commission's after. So we'll just invite Dan to send whatever representative they're willing to send, and I think that'll be fine. But you were asking, uh, you mentioned DDA and DEQ. I think you interchanged.
No, no, I was, I was saying, I was saying, I was saying a DDA could be brought forward regardless of when I act on it the day the DDA is drawn. And the various.
That would be my advice.
Uh, we don't do that. So, but me requesting the DDA, a DDA draft come to us formally to the urban renewal session, no way it was intended to indicate anything was going to be passed back. We need to study all those issues and no question about it. It, I just was going to ask if, if Mr., if Mr. Parker, if you were going to give him a chance to speak for a minute.
Yes, I'm having a little trouble with my Q and A, so bear with me. Okay, um, yeah, uh, please, Mr. Parker. Uh, would you put that into the microphone, please?
I'm Scott Parker, and I own Rossman's Landville with my family.
Mm-hmm.
We have owned it since the 60s. You're, uh, asking to meet with the DEQ to, uh, discuss environmental issues on the property. And I would ask, respectfully ask, if you also include CH2M Hill's people because they have been babysitting that property for over 30 years. They have a room in CH2M with our name on it. There's that, that's many volumes of records of what has been done on the property, and I would like them included in that dissertation. One other thing that I'll add, um, in the five years in negotiations and work with Senator Cal, we have developed, at, at the cost of many thousands of dollars, three documents. An environmental management agreement between them and us, a consent order between DEQ and us, and a consent judgment between Senator Cal and DEQ. All those documents are ready for signature, and they detail the management of the property. Who's going to do what? Uh, the consent judgment that was developed by, uh, Senator Cal and DEQ was to be filed with the courts. And very specific about what happened if they didn't do certain things. The management agreement between them and us is what happens if they or us don't perform. And the consent order was between us and DEQ, and it involved the, the management of the rest of the property, the property that DEQ or that, uh, Senator Cal was not purchasing. So those three documents are, they've been in cities files. They haven't been signed, but they've been, city's been involved with the, with the, uh, well, amount of those documents.
Thank you. Have, have those been distributed previously?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Did you hear that there was another gentleman who wanted to, at the same time as you?
What I need from the commission as a whole is direction whether you want us to invite CH2M Hill as you requested.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to request that the report that comes from CH2M Hill is more recent than the 2007 that is the one that I've been finding.
And, and somebody referred here to documents the city was part of like some time back. I don't know what those are, but since I've been here 10 months, but I'll try to find out what those are. And if we find something in the pile of these records, we'll distribute it right away.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thanks. Any other future agenda items? Okay, um, agenda item four, adoption of the agenda.
You blew it out?
Um, Commissioner Neely?
You said you'd do it.
Oh, oh.
I knew you'd do it out.
Oh. All right. I don't think we need to have a, okay. Um, moving on to item five, general business, uh, item five A, election of chair and vice chair for 2011. I'd like to nominate Brian Shaw for chair. Commissioner Nocida?
Um, I would like to nominate Nancy Walters as chair, and you've been doing a good job, um, as, uh, as, as vice chair and had as good training to be the chair.
Second. Thank you. Any other nominations? Should we take a vote for chair or should we move on to the vice chair nominations?
Might as well do that.
Okay, uh, we'll call for the vote, um.
Roll call, yes.
Yes, this is for chair. Do you want to take the votes for Brian Shaw and then myself?
Okay, um, we'll start with Brian Shaw. Commissioner Roth?
Let me ask who we want to do.
Okay.
Go, go on the rest of the man. Just ask.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Roth?
Nancy Walters.
Commissioner Smith?
Walters.
Commissioner Nocida?
Commissioner Walters.
Commissioner Mom?
Commissioner Shaw.
Commissioner Neely?
Commissioner Shaw.
Commissioner Peterson?
Commissioner Shaw.
Commissioner Shaw? Commissioner Yates?
Nancy Walters.
Commissioner Edgar?
Nancy Walters.
Okay. Commissioner Walters.
I don't need to break the tie. Um, I'll vote for myself. Okay, um, vice chair.
I know, I need Commissioner Shaw for vice chair.
Second.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay. Do we have what kind of consent? Is that legal?
Nope.
All people say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item, agenda item five B, urban renewal charter amendment proposal, and we have a commission report.
Well, this has been a commission-driven process of, um, I'm not sure how much you can say actually. Um, other than that, uh, again, it's a charter amendment to, um, require voting on urban renewal bonds. And there are, um, some concerns to think about in this process. One is, um, typically, at least the last time we had a charter amendment, which was 2002, and it had to do with terms of the mayor, there was a charter committee, a committee that was formed to discuss the topic. And I believe at your last meeting, um, the city attorney handed out a memo that, um, actually not last meeting, I think it was actually several months ago, had a, a proposed timeline for, uh, a commission, uh, process. This was before the, the abbreviated process that you're discussing today. Uh, so that's one consideration is, is how, obviously, the timing of this and if you want to have a charter committee delicate at the complexity of this issue. There are a lot of complex issues, um, associated with this. And a part of the concern is the urban renewal district currently, the downtown district is, uh, does not generate a lot of revenue partly because, um, most of the property is either underdeveloped or not developed. And so we have a fairly tight budget in urban renewal. And, um, one of the ways to get the increment is to get projects. And one of the ways to get projects is to get financing for the projects. And, uh, bonding authorities is, uh, is a good way to do that, at least in, in most districts. The other thing that we found out as we looked at, uh, other urban renewal districts in Oregon and, and none have, uh, this restriction that, that is being proposed. Um, and then the other concern, of course, is the effect that it could have on the rivers project. The, uh, current DDA, which you know has not been approved, but there is a draft DDA, but the current version of the DDA has the district reimbursing the developer for the costs of building that landfill, and those are costs associated with peers and methane mitigation. The proposal in, again, in the DDA had the issuance of a bond to reimburse the developer once the project was built. So, uh, the point there is, is that if this does go on the ballot and if it is approved, it, we need to, we need some time to see how that's going to affect the rivers DDA. Um, and thank you, Doc. Josh, that's probably all I need to say.
Any commission discussion?
Um, I'm going to have a question. I'm from the attorney. After, of course, you have discussions. And since we have citizens that think they want speed, I think we go ahead and see some essential process.
Order, um, since we have the city attorney here, I'd like, um, to suggest that, um, that the city attorney actually explain the text of the, of the, of the, of the mayor so that can inform or possibly inform any citizen comment, um, that takes place in the committee discussion afterward.
Let me guess, please. Well, as I said, this, um, is a pretty long charter amendment. And it, um, is similar to me, the, uh, the expressed desires of, at least what I understood, the, uh, majority of the commission wants. The principle is that urban renewal bonded indebtedness must be voted upon. Now, we've had to get there in a. Now, we've had to get there in a circular manner, and that's because this commission is not the agency being regulated. The charter is for the city. However, there's an intersection at which the city must approve the actions of this agency that create debt. And what this amendment does is to require, uh, that the city commission shall not approve any, uh, urban renewal plan that contains, uh, the possibility of bonded indebtedness without having that bonded indebtedness go to a vote of the people. There are exemptions from this. Uh, first of all, there's any commitments that have already been entered into by this agency. Right? That includes any bonds that are outstanding, any bonds that have been authorized, or any indebtedness that has been committed to by legal instrument. So we're looking prospectively rather than, uh, not prospectively. Anything you've entered into, you, it just does not seem to evade. Um, it does require that an urban renewal plan, when it goes to the, the city commission, contain a provision, which we'll see in subsection B of the charter, before it's adopted, the post-sec, the charter amendment. And it gives the legal definition in subsection C of what bonded indebtedness means. It's basically any instrument that has a debt of over one year. Uh, and then, um, finally, sub D, uh, also exempts any, uh, uh, commitment in which the city has already entered into. So this is prospective. It does require a vote, uh, and it requires the vote before the city commission approves the, uh, urban renewal plan.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Neely has a question.
My first question, um, I took the document off, I shouldn't have, but through the reference to within a, a year. Um, my question's specific. When, uh, Urban spoke to the Urban Renewal Commission last time, uh, one item of financing that he suggested was that the, um, if, if, if the DDA is approved, they would go ahead, front all the expenses and so forth, uh, and would then, uh, not have any reimbursement of funds until the project was built out and, I believe, eighty percent occupied, at which time they would let the increment created by the development pay back the indebtedness. Now, that's more than a year, and so I'm not sure, uh, I'm not sure if there's a distinction to be made or, or not.
If you have an authorization for indebtedness, that would come under this charter amendment.
Does the latest development agreement stipulate eighty percent occupancy before the reimbursement comes through? Okay. Okay, um, we'll take citizen comments, uh, starting with, oh, excuse me, we have a new computer. Uh, Commissioner Ma.
Um, I just wanted to, um, clarify things, because I'm new to the commission, and I'm new to urban renewal, I just want to clarify. The bond measures that we're talking about for urban renewal is not like the Oregon City School bond measure. Is that correct? Would that be on our property taxes?
Any repayment of bonded indebtedness would appear on your property taxes.
Okay. And then, um, the next question I had was, and we have people that represent, um, different areas, like, um, Commissioner Nancy Walters, Chair, you represent Park Place, and, uh, Graham Pearson represents, um, Chamber. So I just want to know, um, if, uh, if we had had an opportunity, um, with Mr. Gates, um, being new to the, um, commission as of two weeks, if he had opportunity to meet with his, um, business members to get a sense as to how they felt.
Yeah, for you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the same thing with me. I, I anticipated that there would be further discussion, um, as the, as we consider this amendment.
So then, is this, is we're looking for a recommendation to give to the commission from this? Is that what we're doing, or is this like?
Yes.
Just what we're looking for is a recommendation?
Are we looking for a recommendation tonight?
Well, a recommendation could be to continue. The recommendation could, could be to not adopt the amendment, any recommendation that this commission sees fit.
Sure. Did, did you?
I depress it.
Oh, okay, um, yes.
I would like to find out if there's any, uh, consensus on anyone here on, is there any change? Is there any wording, or is, is this exactly what this commission wants? Is there, uh, is there something about it that, uh, should be considered different than what now happens in front of us?
Just in the process, I thought we were going to hear citizen comment and then deliberate.
My question on your head.
Just Commissioner Gates.
Does this allow us, um, to, um, is the language we draft that allow for a, um, vote on more than an actual bond that's about to be issued? In other words, can there be a, um, global kind of approval for the bonds that are being issued under the plan? Effectively, just approve the plan, that's what I'm sort of wondering. Can you, or would it require, every time you floated a bond, per se, a facade improvement program, would you need to vote for that bond, a one million dollar bond that happened to go along with it?
Chair, Commissioner Gates, um, I anticipate that you're going to authorize the projects in the plan. There will be a plan of financing in it, and that would be the basis for authorizing the bonds. And when you approve the plan, you would give preapproval to bonds as a means of doing the financing.
So, you might, and effectively, you would, you would be voting on the plan, whether you're voting on the bond or not. So you could step back, you could step back a piece and say that the city ordinance, city ordinance, city commission amended, I mean, put to the voters, amended the charter to approve minimums to an urban renewal plan, and you hit the same point, would you not?
Would the adoption of the amendment satisfy?
And isn't it true, I think it's Dan, that the city of Beaverton now has a rule that says you can't amend an urban renewal plan without a vote of people? Couldn't you do that in Beaverton? I think there are a couple of other reasons.
I understand that, Madam Sheriff, and they, is that they have done that. They haven't adopted a plan yet, so we don't know how it's, how it's working or not.
Thank you.
So we have a question for, uh, Mr. Selden as well. How would that effectively change the way that, um, we're currently facing the future? Um, my understanding is that the plan calls for, um, retail development of Rossman landfill. So in essence, would, um, would the financing also be deemed to be up and preapproved under our current scenario?
Under the current scenario, you could adopt a plan, and the commission can adopt the plan without a vote. And so the issue is, uh, by putting the financing up to a vote, you're effectively looking at the plan.
Is there any advantage, just doing it one way over the other?
I think that's possible. I think you, you can do that, either way, you can do that.
Yeah, I guess, but coming from my personal perspective, um, I don't understand enough about, you know, what the, the changes mean as far as, um, being able to, um, to, to do things in the public interest. And, um, I, I don't know how we come to the point of knowledge, but I certainly am interested to learn as much as I can. And are there any recommendations that you have, uh, for how we can, uh, become better informed?
I suppose that I could get folks to join in. We could have a, a discussion of the mechanics of urban renewal. But, uh, until then, the, the very clear question before you is, do you want votes on these plans or not? Really, that's it.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the president? Okay, um, so we'll take, uh, public comments, starting with Rob Crocker and Alan Keizer.
Comments regarding this?
This is regarding agenda topic, uh, five B, which is the charter amendment proposal.
When I signed in, I asked for your board about the rivers, and she said five E was.
Yeah, it's good. Let's take a comment.
Commissioner, Rob Crocker, uh, business and building owner in Oregon City. Uh, my, my comments about the charter amendment are due process. Um, what's the rush? I mean, honestly, uh, Commissioner Nacita, you've been all about public comment and understanding the facts and, and getting things right. Uh, Commissioner Walters, you've been a stickler for process, making sure that everything is reviewed carefully and, and considered carefully. Uh, Commissioner Smith, you've always desired to represent the people and get good public input. Uh, Commissioner Edgar, you, you're very involved in, in citizens groups, in neighborhood associations. Um, you've, you've always wanted to be a part of that input when, when legislation happens like this. And Commissioner Roth, you're a scientist, and scientists take time. They don't, they don't make snap judgments. By trying to push this thing in through a, a may, uh, vote, that's rushing the process. We need a citizens committee to review what you guys are talking about. This cannot be rushed. I think, I, I would hope all of you would agree with that, because most of you have made public comments to the importance of public participation. So if, if the public sees you trying to rush through this process, that's going to, that's going to give pause to what, actions speak louder than words, that's what I'm going to say. I'm also going to say urban renewal is a very complex issue. Uh, Chair Walters, right here, just said she, she would like more input on what exactly urban renewal is and how it works, and she's been on urban renewal for almost three years. It took me over a year before I truly understood how urban renewal works. And what, by this, this charter, you are asking the citizens to understand urban renewal like that. You're going to ask them to study this for hours and hours and hours about, uh, TIPS, tax income and fund, financing, and, uh, how an urban renewal boundary works, and freezing property taxes, and, and, and stuff that's very complex, it's a complex issue. Um, your, for the city commissioners, your constituents elected you to make tough decisions. They elected you to know the facts. They elected you to research. They elected you to listen to them, and they elected you to make tough decisions. That's what leaders do. Leaders make tough decisions on behalf of those whom you lead. And so by you asking for a charter amendment, you're pushing that leadership responsibility off. Because it's, it sounds like you don't want to make the tough decisions. You need to get input from your constituents. You need to weigh the facts. You need to figure out, like a scientist, what is in the best interest of your constituents, not what's in the best interest of, of, of yourself, not what's in the best interest of your, um, of your lobbyists, but in, in the best interest of the entire city, and then make the tough decisions. Finally, I'd like to, I'd like to know personally, uh, we have an amazing city manager who is just recently hired. I'd like to know what he thinks about this charter amendment. So if he could take three minutes and let us know what he thinks, I would be very happy.
He implements policy, he, he must follow policy of the commission.
He's very well respected. He's been around the block. He's seen, he's, he's seen.
Moving on to the next speaker, uh, Alan Keizer.
Uh, real quick comment. Early December, upon reading the Clackworth's review regarding the rivers, I read comments in there asking for public comment. They said that public comment was going to be very much weighed at the meeting, I think it was December fifteenth, regarding the rivers. While there was a lot of people here in the crowd that spoke for the rivers, very few against it. And I'm beginning to feel that it proves that people are against the rivers, but yet, everybody that spoke was for it. So I'm confused as to why there were quotes in the Clack, Clackworth's review asking for public comment when it appears that they weren't listened to. People I brought here were all for it. I didn't hear anybody, one or two people against it. And I just concerned that there'd be comments in the paper asking for a comment, and, and they're not even listened to. It just doesn't seem proper to me. Then also, a simple question, uh, to Mrs. Roth regarding the Indian hearsay. Do you remember the thing about Indians, three hundred thousand Indians being buried at the site? Do you?
That number has never been used.
Yeah, I think we should avoid her saying that place.
Well, hearsay becomes fact, possibly sometimes.
Well, we can discuss it when it becomes a fact.
Do you know anything about Indians at all, any number, even buried there?
All of those statements are just quotations.
Thank you. And just so people know, we do take all of the comments received seriously. We listen and, um, we do hear you. Thank you. Um, next up, we have, um, Gary Cook and Derek Benneville. When you come up, uh, would you please state your name into the microphone and listen to your side in?
Okay. My name is Derek Benneville. I live in Oregon City. Good evening, commissioners. Um, I just have a real short statement that I wrote, um, so if you have like three minutes of your time here. I've been a previous, uh, city commissioner in years, involved with the CIC in community involvement. I understand the important need for urban renewal districts to improve the tax bases in sections of the city that are blight, and require financial support from the city to kickstart the improvements of the areas identified as urban renewal districts in the efforts of increasing our tax bases. The River Project is the hot topic of the day, but there will be similar projects that will be proposed over the years that could have the same impact to the future of the city. As elected officials, we count on you to make the decisions that will be the best for our community. This includes the use and tool of urban renewal. Majority of the citizens of this community, unfortunately, do not understand what urban renewal process is all about. If we change the charter of the city, requiring everything that urban renewal poses to improve this city to the vote of the people, will be expensive, too time-consuming, and may be impacted by those that lack the information necessary to make the proper decisions for the future of Oregon City. Just look at the Bill Seismore initiatives that were passed by the voters that truly didn't understand what impact it would have to all the cities in Oregon City, or in Oregon. Many that have crippled our cities, including Oregon City. To the point that urban renewal is one of the only tools that this city and elected officials can use for the overall improvement of our community. The commission report supports these concerns. Here to look at the commission report, paragraph two. Due to the complexity of urban renewal projects and agreements, a significant amount of time and resources will be needed to educate the public. In addition, the uncertainty of the outcome of an election may deter potential developers or projects from locating in Oregon City, putting the city at a disadvantage when compared to other cities or counties in Oregon. That's the recommendation of the staff here in Oregon City. I'm not saying that all the projects that we have done in Oregon City have been successful, but many have greatly revitalized our community and have increased our tax bases. The River Project is one that will do just that. Having the proper people as part of the Urban Renewal Committee, all of you, is extremely important for selecting the proper projects that will have the most impact to the future of Oregon City. I'm an advocate of keeping the urban renewal process as is, counting on our elected officials to make the most informative decisions and approval of projects that would have the most positive impact to our city. And more importantly, to have the determination to close urban renewal districts after the property within the district has achieved the tax-based goals set forth by the elected officials with the intentions of creating future renewal districts.
Thank you.
In other areas of Oregon City that are considered blight, like Upper Malau.
Thank you very much. And, uh, Gary Cook?
Good evening, Gary Cook, here in Oregon. Uh, I, uh, have come, uh, over this evening by way of prior experience. I managed for a number of years Clackworth County's urban renewal program. And at the time, I retired, uh, at. At the time, I retired at the end of '06. We had four active urban renewal districts. Since that time, one has been terminated, which returned a lot of assessed value back to the general tax rolls, and another one's in the process. So the message there is, the return of assessed value at the area has revitalized, does work. What I do not want to talk about tonight is a particular project. I think you folks all realize that you are looking at a program issue and not just simply a project issue. And urban renewal programs truly are that. They are a program. They are not an individual project. You don't live and die by one project. Having said that, I believe the issue is the vote on bonded indebtedness. Now, I'm gonna kind of hedge my comments based on what your city council or your city attorney told you a few minutes ago, because that does involve amendments to or creation of a new urban renewal plan. Having said that, I think it's important to understand kind of what urban renewal bonds are. Excuse me. Now, basically, they're a revenue bond. What they are not is a general obligation bond. So you're not asking the taxpayers for an additional amount of taxes or a new tax rate. This is much more akin to a water district trying to finance a pump station. And they paid bonds back from the future revenues they're gonna collect. That's the whole concept behind a revenue bond. That's traditionally what urban renewal bonds have been all about. In other words, taxpayer pays the same. So it's kind of like buying your house. You mortgage, you take out a mortgage based on what you're gonna collect in the future against your job. Well, an urban renewal revenue bond is exactly that. It's you're pledging the revenues you're gonna collect from this new development in the future to repay the bonds. You just need the money upfront, kind of like taking out a short-term loan, if you will. So it doesn't really, it's not a general obligation bond, that is an additional debt. Again, the taxpayer pays the same. And I think it's important to recognize the fundamental difference between a revenue bond and a general obligation bond. I think that there are a number of impacts of requiring a vote of your citizenry on a revenue bond, on an urban renewal bond, if you will. And I want to throw some of those concepts out. I think they've been addressed generally before. One is that it adds a lot of risk. And most developers are pretty risk adverse. You know, if they're gonna take on more risk, they're going to need a greater return. One of the other important things it does is adds a lot of time to the process. If you know that you need to issue a bond to complete a particular project, you're gonna have more time. That's gonna increase the cost of the city's urban renewal program, simply because of cost inflation or time inflation. But it's also gonna increase the risk to the developer, because he's got a lot of holding costs. He's gotta keep his tenants happy, so on and so forth. And I think there have been a number of folks that have alluded to that. The other thing that it does, and I think this is probably one of the key pieces, is you are not as attractive or competitive as some of the competing cities that also want this development. The developer's gonna be looking at more time. He's gonna be looking at more risk. He's gotta have a greater return. And he's competing with the bill, the next city over, who doesn't have to do all of this. So I think that's really one of the key pieces that I want to make sure that you understand, is the program cost. We're not just talking about a particular project. This would apply to all of your projects collectively, your program, that require tax increment dollars in order to get on the ground and be successful generally through a development agreement. Having said that, that behind my comments, if there are questions, I'll try to answer them at your convenience.
Next, we have Scott Parker and Mike Bradbury.
My name is Scott Parker. As I said earlier, I own Austin's landfill with the rest of my family. I understand the purpose of this meeting. I don't understand why it is an emergency or quickly held meeting. But if your recommendation to the city commission is to require a vote for urban renewal bonding, I assume you're also gonna recommend the city sign department make up some signs that say the city is no longer open for business. That's the way I feel. Ladies and gentlemen, it's time for a reality check. The Parker family owns a large tract of land inside the city limits that's surrounded by a transportation and access nightmare. That nightmare's about to be fixed. ODOT's gonna spend $27 million or they're about fixing it. The citizens of Oregon City and the state of Oregon have actively and historically promoted and utilized a tool to aid in the economic development and enhancement of blighted or brownfield property and the creation of jobs and the generation of tax dollars. So that's what we needed to fund the schools, police, fire, all the public services that we've come to enjoy. There are major efforts underway locally that are trying to take that tool apart. And I feel they're trying to put up roadblocks to that development. The Rivers Project alone promises to bring $160 to $180 million worth of taxable value to the city. The immediate property surrounding that development won't remain vacant. The taxable value that's surrounding property and improvements when the development occurs will be an immediate benefit to the city's coffers. The downtown Oregon City area that I've heard so many people talking about not having the funds to do their improvements, the funds will be in the city coffers to do that. There are a few vocal elected and appointed officials that I feel are trying their best to rob the city and the citizens of this huge opportunity. I had a conversation today with Fred Bruning. You'll notice he's not here. I don't think he's gonna be there Wednesday either. And I sure hope you guys don't chase him away. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mike Bradbury. I don't reside in Oregon City, but I'm kind of new here to what's been happening. What I see here is there's four new positions on the Urban Renewal Commission now. And it almost looks like you guys are getting accustomed to one another and how it works with the planning process and so forth. It's actually pretty refreshing to see these public comment processes on such an important issue as this. The important issue of it is, TIF financing and the urban renewal process are very delicate. I'd like to comment about the charter change amendment that's gonna be required for the bonds that you're putting forward today that is gonna be discussed and hopefully voted down. You know, or future, people can come in and comment. One of the problems with it is gonna be the confusion over general bonds and tax increment financing bonds. The other problem is gonna be the amount of time to educate the public of Oregon City about this confusion or the complicated issues around it. You know, they're gonna probably mistake that. And if you do that, chances are, you're probably gonna miss a couple fish that are out there looking at this property to come in. The drain this could create on the TIF financing structure and the URG fund accumulation for the TIF process is not real good. If you put this to vote and everything gets shot down, how are you gonna generate any revenue to your TIF urban renewal process and your general funds under that area? Now, if you take a big generator like Cabela's or the Rivers, which is a mixed-use residential, you don't put the houses on top and let everyone come along the lake on the boardwalk, so forth. What that's gonna do to the city when those people come here with their dollars? I mean, I've been to these Cabela's before, and they're kind of a family store. Not everybody's throwing money hand over fist, don't get me wrong, but they're coming to your city. They're gonna come and spend money in your city. They might be visitors, you know, and there's gonna be opportunity that's gonna trickle down or it's gonna prime the pump, or however you wanna look at it. It's gonna be a big, potentially stimulating growth for the whole planning process. I mean, you guys have outlined your city comp plan, which talks about how the neighbors and the community over the years have developed their vision for the city. And this potential project could really be an opportunity to grow that vision that the city and their residents have. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Ed Darrell and Aaron Olson.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. My name is Ed Darrell. I live in Wilsonville. I'm the developer of the Coles Project. And I have asked for it to pass out what we call our project management schedule. Not for you to go through it in detail right now, but just to understand the process that you go through as a developer. When we came to the town, we looked at the piece of property. We talked with the city manager, discussed potential opportunities. And then we went into what we call the administrative level. We went to the land acquisition, talked about how we could acquire the property. Then we did our preliminary designs. At this point, we have over $7 million committed to this project. If at that point in time when we did the original analysis on the land and looked at all the deficiencies with the land, the fact that it had any number of problems, we suggested that we have an appraisal made of that property, and it came out with a negative $12 million value. At that point, we said, "We are not interested." But we said, "All right, is there an opportunity that we could do in working in concert with the city that would create a new increment for the city and would in fact support the project?" That was four years in the making. If as a developer you were to look at this and say, "All right, we've got a brownfield. We have any number of negatives," which in fact take the property and do not put it on a regular plain filled with other property, you would not do the project. I can say unequivocally that if we were to have been in a position where it would be a vote from a third party, the citizens, that this private could potentially go forward, we would not have invested probably $2 million if we did this upfront, to make the analysis, and now over $7 million. So I think that's what people are saying here tonight, that if you take and take this away, you're gonna take and push developers away. So that's the basic comment.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Olson, and I'm glad that we're having this commission meeting tonight. For the record, I am a resident of Oregon City. I am a registered voter. I vote, and I'm a registered Democrat. And I'm gonna exercise my First Amendment rights. I'm also a college instructor, and I also know what methodology is and I know what process is. And I hope that the commission values that as well. I just want to make a few comments here, and they'll be brief. I want to make it very clear and concise that I am opposed to the Urban Renewal Charter Amendment proposal. I want to take a little sip back in history quickly. Some of you may remember this. This is former Mayor Alice Norris in her 2008 State of the City address. And she said, "The Rivers is a catalyst project for Oregon City. It will stimulate jobs, attract other businesses, and help sustain the small businesses already located here." At the last public open house for the Rivers, someone asked, "Why is everything in Oregon City always at the end of something? Why not at the beginning?" This could be the beginning, folks. Let's listen to our president, Obama. You know, he talked to our nation last week. The state of Oregon has a crisis right now. Clockamas County has a crisis. Our national unemployment rate, and this is from the Department of Labor, January 25th, is 9.4%. The state of Oregon is 10.6%. This is an opportunity. And continuing with our former mayor, she said, "It may be our only chance for many years to develop the wasteland in our North End and reclaim an old garvey dump. The cost will only go higher. The development of the Rivers will create tax increments to enable our urban renewal district to fund projects in the downtown and on 7th Street. The land is worth almost nothing today. You saw its current conditions in the slides. This would definitely be a change for the better." Again, this is an opportunity. The state is in a crisis. We all know that. As you all know from your history, when Oregon was a territorial state, we were the capital of Oregon. This is an opportunity for us to write history, folks. You are making a major decision. Yes, it is political, but it's also we, the people. And keep in mind, let's remember Article 5 of the US Constitution, that empowers government to have a republic. People are elected to these positions of leadership. Let's not fail what the voters elected us for. Let's do the right thing. Let's research this. Let's use the process. Let's make informed decisions and serve the people of Oregon City the way that they expect us to perform in a leadership position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, I know for a fact that there have been Republicans that have been testifying.
Okay, next we have Dan Fowler and Dan Holiday again. Is this the same testimony as before or different?
My name is Dan Holiday. I live in Oregon City. I'm a member of IVW Local 48, and I'm a Republican. So I'm really here tonight to talk about process a little bit, and I might repeat a couple of comments. But I think it's really important that, and I said this in the city commission meeting earlier, the charter is our constitution. And it's been in place since 1844. That's 167 years. And in that timeframe, we have only made a few amendments to that constitution, that charter. And in those times that we have made those amendments, or, you know, changes to the city charter, there has always been a process. Either a process of the city having a charter review committee, or a process whereby the people, and I have to admit I'm responsible for a couple of those amendments, went out to the voters of the city, gathered the required number of signatures, went through a political campaign of explaining to the people of Oregon City why they were, you know, petitioning to have the charter changed. And then there was the public vote. That process takes a lot of time, just to get out of the votes. And I know that one of the commissioners here tonight has complained that there's been a long discussion about this because they did two amendment processes, initiative processes, which both failed. Didn't get enough signatures to get on the ballot. So I really, really believe that this is too important an issue for this to be rushed through this body and then rushed through the city commission in order to get it on the May ballot, when, you know, there's really not an issue whether you do it in May, you do it September, or you do it November. So, you know, I think that's a real key piece of this thing that you folks gotta understand, that the CIC needs to be able to comment, the Chamber of Commerce needs to comment, the different neighborhood groups need to comment. Ms. Walters, you've already said tonight that you haven't had an opportunity to talk to the group that you allegedly represent. Mr. Yates is the same way. So I can't imagine how any of you folks could vote to move this on to the city commission tonight without at least talking to the constituency that you supposedly represent. That's all I have.
Dan Fowler, Oregon City. I guess, what do you move on? There's been no language adopted by the city commission. The process seems a little backwards to me. I don't know what it is, other than a feeling of that the charter might need to be changed that you're talking about. There's been no specific language recommended. We don't know if there's ideas that will be brought up in a process that might change that language. I don't know what the question you can ask and what the question you can answer really is, to be honest with you. I want to be just a little specific, and just for just a moment, assume that you recommended it to the commission, or the commission might actually adopt it at the commission level. How does it really work?
Have you asked the staff for an analysis of how that process works? And I'm the developer coming in and do I need to get a DDA before I go to the vote of the people? Or I need to go to the vote of the people with my project and then come back to the city and get a DDA? Do I get that development agreement and then because of that, the process, you need a development agreement? I missed the election cycle, so now I'm, I'm several months down the road and now I miss a tenant? Or a tenant that I had when I got my DDA and I, when I got my vote of the people is gone, but now my project is changed? And so now, do I go back and do I start over? And do I have to change and go back to the vote because I represented my project to be one way? Do I take my project to the vote of the people or just the money to the vote of the people? I got a lot of questions. Those can all get flushed out if there is a feeling that this is a good idea. But this is a bad idea. It's a bad idea. And sometimes you need to call it like it is. This is a bad idea. Now, how could anything as good as voting be bad? It's like murder, hit and half a pie. It's a bad idea because it doesn't work. You're an urban renewal agency or a city, urban renewal districts, start to change, buy the areas and make them better. When you throw that step into the process, it disconnects the reality of gaining projects and having your city improve. I really think that you should not portray something that seems good to the public while you're trying to shove it down the public's throat. It's too fast. It's a bad idea. It won't work. It will chase business away. And I hope that our city commission has three votes to end this nonsense and so we can focus on a positive working city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have William Gifford and Ryan Smith.
Dear Commissioners, good evening. My name is William Gifford, for those of you that might not know me. I have three brief comments that I'd like to make. One specifically that has not been made, although there has been reference to, and this has to do with process, but there has been no reference to, um, there has been reference to, this has not been passed by the CIC, has not been passed by the chamber, has not been vetted by all of these other things. But one other area, and I learned this from, the comment was made from, excuse me for mentioning your name, Chief Trichoffer pointed out that it has not been run by the taxing districts that depend on urban renewal funding. I think this is significant omission, that this amendment would not be passed by those taxing districts for their opinions. Another comment that I want to respond to is made by Mr. Parker. And he talked about, and I'll quote, "City coffers." The tax money that can come in from, and I'm not talking co-con right now, but I'm talking about the purpose for urban renewal in general, to bring money into the tax, the, the city coffers. I think those of you that know me know, um, excuse me, I don't give a damn about money. And I don't care about so much our tax coffers, our city coffers, as I do care about the quality of lives of our citizens and what the impact of this renewal can do for those souls that are unemployed that are looking for a better quality of life in this city. To me, it's not about money. Last comment, I'm going to criticize my good friend Dan Fowler for picking on Phil and Nancy in particular. You folks, you commissioners should not have been singled out for not representing, for not bringing back to your constituents your issues. Because it's not you who are representing a neighborhood association. The point was, the point was that Phil Yates, well, not that Dan's, Phil Yates and Nancy Walters were singled out for not representing their constituents. And I think that Paul Edgar could have been singled out. I think that Kathy Roth is also an active member in a, in a neighborhood association. I think that as Grant Peterson is a representative of the same chamber, Thomas, he has not brought any presentation to the Government Economic Affairs Committee. There have been a number of opportunities that have not been taken. And I, I think that it's unfair to single out just two commissioners for not doing their responsibilities. I don't think any of you have done it.
We haven't even had a meeting, so. Thank you. Ryan Smith.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Smith. I'm a resident of Oregon City. I own two restaurants on Main Street and a sightseeing Seaplane Tour business in Canema. Firstly, I do not support the charter proposal. I am confused is what the emergency is. I'm no expert on urban renewal. I know a little bit about leadership, politics, and development. Let's talk about development. That, let there be no mistake, that site will be developed. So you need to look at the burden hand and what you've got coming in your direction because it's a really good development and it could be a super Walmart and you don't want your names on that. Let's talk about politics. This seems a politics, not the good kind. Shoving this down our throats like this, the emergency meeting, none of this makes sense. When it comes to leadership, and it's been said many times, you guys are, I mean, you'd be voting to make, render yourselves useless here as an urban renewal commission. I mean, you're, you're here elected, appointed whatnot to gather these facts and to receive all these facts and to process information and make a vote on it. How is a voter going to do that on a ballot in their living room? There's no way. There is no way. That's tearing up the, why don't we go ahead and have the voters review the architectural plans as well? I mean, we've got people on staff, but let's just put it to a vote, vote of the people. I mean, it's the same type of thing you're asking them to comprehend, you know, on a ballot. It just doesn't make any sense. You, you are the urban renewal commission. You are tasked with making tough decisions. Make tough decisions, take risks. There's not going to be certainty in everything, although this development has a lot of certainty that a lot of other developments do not have. Do not, do not vote this in. Stick with your oath. That's what you're here to do, make decisions. Don't put it off on your, on your citizens. This is not something that citizens should be voting on. This is something that you guys should be voting on. This is why we have you here. So let's see some leadership.
Thank you. And finally, we have one more speaker, Nick Veroski.
Thank you. My name is Nick Veroski. I do not live in Oregon City. I'm a property owner here and I've got very optimistic about our future. Should the leaders of the city accept their responsibility and their authority and lead? I have got a article here from the, another newspaper, January 14th, and the headline is "Oregon Lands Solo Power." And within this article, the state of Oregon, federal government, and other entities have put up, it appears, about $100 million to attract 170 workers to make solar cells in Wilsonville. 170 workers, $100 million of subsidies, and the, and the company is putting up, to raise the $100 million of its own money. We're facing a decision here where we can create 15 to 1700 jobs. 350 to 400 of those are family wage jobs, according to the developer. That seems like a no-brainer in a city where we have 1800 unemployed. And at the city council meeting last week, we heard testimony from one individual where two of his neighbors were being foreclosed out of their homes. Family wage jobs can afford to boost up the value of people's homes and to pick up those, those homes that are in foreclosure, it could also afford income to those people who are being foreclosed to avoid foreclosure. The advantage of you accepting your position to do the best thing for the city and to lead can be seen in the, in, in articles like this. And Solo Power says that we chose Wilsonville and Oregon over other states because the officials strong and coordinated bid for the plant, the presence of ports for exporting, and the government's support. Oregon fit together the best combined package. Sometimes trying to get things done can be contentious. This was very synergistic. We're not saying synergism here. We're saying contention to the point that we risked the loss of a very unique opportunity to another city. And if that major draw tenant goes to another city, the three to four million people who the developer expects to attract five minutes down the road here will go to that other location. Do you want that on your shoulders? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to add the additional letters we see into the record?
You don't really have an official record. I would take them in though.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, do we have any discussion? We don't have any cues. Oh, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I just want to start by saying thank you to all of you coming tonight and I really appreciate the discussions that have taken place in the last few days and weeks. I've spoke with a lot of people. I've met personally with multiple people in this room. We do take this seriously. We do, we really do. And what I want to say right now is that in terms of this topic, the Urban Renewal Charter Amendment, it's been talked about for two years in concept. Not in detail. And I think May is too early. I think it really does need to be looked at more in depth. I want to do that. I want to have that discussion. But I don't see how that discussion can take place in, in the next week. And so that's, that's kind of my, my point of view. I think we really need to look a little further at it. I do still want to discuss it and continue talking about it because there's definitely people in this community that have felt this is an important issue. And I think it's been brought up enough times in the last year that it has to be looked at. But I don't want to rush it. I, I really think it's important that we look in great detail at what this is going to, how many things this is going to affect. And really get into the wording and, and talk about it as a community. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah, I'm going to just say that I don't even really feel comfortable having this discussion at urban renewal at this point. And I would actually make a motion that we table the discussion entirely until we've had that public discourse, that process. And at that time, then I'm happy to, once that process has gone through the process that it deserves, and given the time it deserves, then we can start talking about it at urban renewal. But I haven't talked to my constituents. I haven't, I've barely had the time to think about it myself. I feel like this is not only getting stuff down the public's throat, but down my throat. And I really think that the process needs to happen and I would make a motion that we table this until such time that we deem it necessary or that we feel the process is taking place.
Well, okay, so I don't know how we can table it and have discussion on it.
I have a second and I can go on the discussion, so I'll second the motion. I can go on the discussion.
Okay, let's go into discussion.
You do it all the time. Mr. Attorney? Okay, therefore, I will draw my seat.
No questions? Okay, Commissioner Keith?
There's a number of comments on process and I agree with Dan Fowler, for example, about the necessity of process on this charter amendment. A charter amendment is important. It does change the constitution of the city and I believe it really ought to be analyzed carefully before it's submitted to people for vote. But this issue of voting on the 10th Amendment to the Oregon City Urban Renewal Plan has been kicking around since it was adopted, what, three years ago when it was adopted? I'm forgetting. It's been three years. I was there when it happened. And there was quite a bit of discussion from the people, from the peanut gallery at least, not these people, but quite a few others who were there listening to that process. And the request essentially was at that time, and has been repeated consistently by a very large, I, my view at least, percentage of the people of Oregon City who are involved in this kind of thing, to have a vote. So I personally would like to see a vote for the 10th Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan because of its scope. I mean, basically, that amendment was to increase the body authority of the urban district from like $30 million to like $130 million. It was submitted on the basis of written documents that, what I thought at the time were totally inadequate and not pretty well thought through. And it was basically adopted, basically on a trusty kind of basis, I thought, for the, essentially shows the city administrators to get it done right. I didn't think it was right at the time and I still don't think it's right. I personally would like to see on the May ballot, or as quickly as we can get, a vote on the 10th Amendment. A vote on the authority of this body to issue $100 million for the bonds. Now, as I understand it, we've already agreed to issue a couple, excuse me, we've already agreed to issue the bonds for the code. But it's striking that what we need here is certainty. What we don't want to do, I don't think, is go down the path of talking about a charter amendment for the next six months, put it on the ballot, maybe get it passed. And then where are we then? Why not go ahead and have a, why not go ahead and have the city commission put the 10th Amendment? True language that Ed drew up for us, that wouldn't kill the code. And see if the people of Oregon City agree with the majority of the people in this room that it's in the best interest of Oregon City for this project to go forward. They may decide that to be the case. If that's the case, then we should go forward with it. But the voter free lunch, these, this, this is a subsidy for the, for these developers. And the decision to subsidize something of this scope seems to me ought to be submitted to the people. And to not do so, I think, is the kind of thing that causes distrust between voters and government. And it's basically that reason that I'm in favor of this, because I would like to see trust restored between the lowest level of government in our society and the people who basically pay the taxes to run it.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I think the subsidy idea of Phil is, I think anything that's going to go on on that site is going to have to have some kind of assistance. Whether it's Walmart or whatever, they're going to be here asking for some assistance because it's a landfill that we created. Now, uh, we have to do a process here on this because we don't want 10 members of the Urban Renewal Commission determining the fate of the urban renewal bonds. That should be done by a citizen group. That should be done by a citizen group, as it's always done. I believe in the process. And the motion's correct, Mr. Graham, thank you. And it should be done at a time that is, that's best suited for all of us. Because we have got to get, all of us got to get knowledgeable about this before we can send it out to the public. Keep in mind to, again, I'll tell you, it's like twenty years to get a school bond passed. This is Urban Renewal. A lot more complicated.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It is awesome to see the reactivation of our citizens and your engagement. I'm very excited that you're following our government process. And I want to encourage everybody to continue coming to Urban Renewal Commission's meetings because they're so exciting. So the other thing is, I just want to make it clear that we've already spent ten thousand dollars for one document to be drawn up, to be put on the ballot. And I don't want to, like, be spending more money. So I don't know about what Commissioner Yates was suggesting, but I'm thinking we should talk about that and have better citizen input. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Neely?
I'm not, I'm not sure Commissioner Shaw's correct about other retailers potentially coming in. Perhaps ones that would be less, let's see, less dramatically developed. We did have Home Depot, which was welcome, of course, coming in. But I think you'd see a piece of meal developed without subsidies. And I think after that had happened, we'd be very unhappy with the product. I am concerned with Commissioner Yates's desire to send this out while we've had another developer that's actually invested. I understand something like eight, eight million dollars in the, in the project at the, at the dump site. And I'm, I'm sure the development of that kind is desired in many communities in this, in this region. And I think we have the potential of really losing it in the process. We, like I said, if a person's going to invest, the developer's going to invest that kind of money in the project, I, I don't think at this stage in the game would be fair for that developer to be strung out in that form. If it's to come forward, I think we should exempt a project that's already in the process from being subject to that kind of review in terms of the body.
Thank you. Commissioner Neseeda?
When, when we got going this year with this new commission, a majority of our commission commissioners had experienced campaigning and hearing from constituents and knocking on doors and hearing a lot of concerns about urban renewal. These proposals don't come in a vacuum. Commissioner Yates has, has described some of, some of the issues that he experienced and, and I experienced at the same time. Commissioner Smith and I were elected in two thousand and eight. We both campaigned on this issue. Commissioner Roth was elected last year and campaigned on this issue. We heard from a lot of people, we still hear from a lot of people. And I, I guess I have to say I don't share the pessimism of what I've heard from some folks in the audience about the, about something being political. In a democratic society, when you hear your constituents during the course of a campaign expressing an opinion and advocate for something, I may be naive to think that when you get elected, you adhere to those promises. You adhere, you know, to the, you, you are faithful to what you campaigned on. Some, I, I, it's been quite, I think astonishing for me to hear in the course of the past several weeks, counsel from several people, both on staff and from the general public, to say to me, no, no, it's wrong for you to be faithful to what you campaigned on. When we, I, so, once the new year came around and we recognized from inquiry what the deadlines were to get something like a charter amendment on the ballot, I personally felt it was necessary to begin the process. And this process, which has already included one public hearing before the City Commission and this hearing tonight before the Urban Renewal Commission and, you know, another hearing that's been continued to Wednesday night, to get, to respond to the will of what a majority of the commission has heard from its constituents, and I still hear from constituents. That's part of the process too, getting something on the table. This is part of the process and, and we've heard from a lot of people. So it, you know, so you, if, if the recommendation is to take more time, that's the recommendation. And that's, but, so I, I respect the comments from folks on, on timing. I, I, I think I'm, I still have to adhere to my, to my convictions and the bond I have with the people who elected me, this is something they want. And so we will continue this discussion on that. Thanks.
Commissioner Neely?
I have no problem with people voting their convictions. And the people ran on cert platforms, and I expect that to happen. I do want to clarify, however, that for three races for commission seats in the American Senate from the last election, the majority of votes went to candidates, and all of those that supported the Urban Renewal District and supported the voters.
Okay. There's a few issues that I'd like to correct, I believe. This landfill was not authorized by the city. This landfill is authorized by the county. And in us annexing, us to this piece of property to the city, we've taken over the county's liability. I, I'm, for one, not, yeah, that is true. Excuse me, Dan. I would refer you to the recent lawsuit in Eugene where the city was just sued for the landfill.
It's going to be a clarification of a legal argument. I'd prefer to hear from our attorney than either, either as members of the commission or, or members of the public.
Okay, I would also like to respect the right and of the intelligence of the voters. I have heard from several people in this room this evening that the common citizen is not capable of understanding urban renewal. I find that a very detrimental statement to say about the common voter. And I believe that anyone is capable of understanding it if they put the time in. And I don't think that we have the right to make that judgment. And as Phil said, we can also analyze it. Three years is a very long time to look at this process. And I believe three years is, is an adequate timeframe to look at this process. And I guess so far. Thank you.
I don't know if the attorney wants to comment on liability or?
Not on, not on Eugene because I don't know this situation.
So I'll make my first motion as a Urban Renewal Commissioner. I propose that we recommend to the City Commission to put something on the ballot, but not to propose charter amendment. I propose that we put something on the ballot to eventually get a vote on the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment that authorized that thirty million dollar bond.
I guess where I'm a little bit confused is if we could understand the issue or the, or the concern that we're trying to address tonight, then...
As I understand me, this is to inform the City Commission that next week, that later weeks, that's to what this commission believes about the issue of a public vote on of the bonding authority under the Urban Renewal Commission's charter. And so my proposal is, let's advise the City Commission as an organization, as this group, that that is something that is in fact desirable, a vote of people on the big issues. And that's the two of my motions.
I'll second it.
Well, that goes to discussion, huh? This is motion and you, and the motion altogether, there is no time to discuss it.
Uh, he, he is not on, you know?
I switched the button, I probably did.
Oh, well, I apologize, I didn't get it in my, in my queue.
Can we remove the motion in a second so we can discuss it?
Do you want to call the vote?
Direction, please, yes. Is the vote on floor seconded?
The city opinion.
Come down in the context of the discussion on the motion if you want to.
Just on the contents of the motion?
General discussion, but it's, the motion's on the floor. And if Commissioner Gregory wants to discuss it in the context of the motion, that's fine. Something else, so?
Yeah, okay.
Phil, I want to make a comment. I've gone door to door with a lot of petitions as a candidate. And I would like to make a statement that when I asked people to sign a petition to have a vote on urban renewal bonding, I would say eighty percent of the people that I presented the petition to agreed that they felt that they wanted to have the right to vote. And then, maybe not everyone agreed that they, that this was the best process, but they wanted it to be taken out to the public where the public had an opportunity to determine if in fact that's what they wanted. And I just found that it was overwhelming going door to door, talking to the average citizen about whether or not they wanted to have the right to vote on urban renewal bonding. Now, I just think that we have a, a right, and much like what Phil said, that we need to make sure we have a contract with the people where the people have the right and, and, and feel as if that they're empowered. And much like Commissioner Roth said, I don't think that it's that, it's rocket science, getting people to understand urban renewal. And maybe it came easy to me. And maybe I feel a, I have maybe a greater understanding than, than many about urban renewal. But I don't think it's something that is easily taken to the, to the people. And I'm not against taking it to the people. I would like to have, I would be very candid with you. I would like to have a good process. And I would go along with Rocky Smith, Mr. Smith, in saying that, that we do make sure that everyone understands the implications of what we're talking about. But we have too much, too many times where we bought houses on Second and Tumwater. And it was very difficult for anyone to turn around and say that they could justify that money. We've spent money on a city hall that has no tip. It, it does not create increment. We've had some bad decisions being made. And that's created a very reactionary set of, of circumstances in a lot of the citizenry. And I come here primarily as just a citizen at large on the, on the Urban Renewal Commission. But the citizens as a whole feel as if they've been hosed too many times. There have been people out there that have just been some bad things. And now's the time for us to try to rein in some bad process. Now, I would be here very honestly to say that I'm pro-urban renewal. I'm pro-being smart. But we've not had a lot of that happening. So now can I, now we have some people here that I think create a majority of people that want that they're smart. And maybe where you are in a situation where we, we don't need a checks and balances that a, a referendum on every bond issue would take, would require. But we may need a big slush fund or a working fund that allows us to be nimble. We just have to think through this whole thing. And we just want to make sure that we create positive things that creates a sustainable community. And we pay for it. I see many of our urban renewals plans, just like the current urban renewal plan, is going on and on and on. And it's not creating any revenue over and above for the city. And if we start creating urban renewal plans that go for the next twenty-five years, I'll be debt. And we'll still not have paid any money in that's going to be covering any of the ongoing costs of this city for police, fire, city employees, for obligations created by those urban renewal districts and developments. So I'm a tax conservative. I want something to pave the way. I want the city to create revenue. So for twenty-five years, we're creating obligations that require us to create more taxes on every one of the citizens out here. So, because we don't have money coming in. Now, I'd then be able to come back and say, City Commission, why did you come back and have, put a tax measure against this? Well, we aren't creating the revenue because all the revenue is going to pay for bonds. Is that smart? Or are, are, are there something else we could be doing? Like creating a lid or a, a limited, our local improvement deal within a urban renewal district that, that pays for its new obligations? If in fact, we turn around and do some, create transportation impacts that exceed the capabilities, who pays for all of the new transportation infrastructure when SDCs are not adequate? So we've got to think through things. And I don't know that we've always been thinking smart. I just hope to be somebody here that thinks smart in the future. And I'm sorry for taking so long. I've never had this opportunity before, so.
Okay, we're still discussing the...
Your three-minute term.
The motion. And the motion again is to amend the Tenth? Can you have, yeah, can you read the amendment for the motion?
My motion was to recommend to the City Commissioner that there be a vote on, that there be a vote on the Tenth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Commission, the Urb, what is it called? Tenth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan? The Tenth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan adopted three years ago by the City Commission.
Yes, Mr. Sullivan?
No, I'm here. I don't want to throw cold water on anybody, but I, this is new.
And I'm going to look at it, and I'm going to need to look at it in forty-eight hours. So I'm not committing that this can be done.
It sounds like there's a lot of ideas out there for responding to the concerns that Mr. Edgar so eloquently discussed. We have a couple other comments from Commissioner Neely and Commissioner Shaw. And after that, Commissioner Long, so we'll go ahead with the discussion.
First of all, I would say that I voted for a couple of improvements to property under the Urban Renewal Act that I regret. I, I don't think it's quite accurate that Paul Andrew hasn't had a chance to speak. I've heard about many of these issues. Coming to the point, I, I feel we have the same issue that we're dealing with in the vote we're talking about, having insufficient discussion as we had insufficient discussion about the bonding question. discussion about the bonding question. In either case, my big concern is that we're, uh, going to probably preclude a development occurring as already made substantial, uh, investment. If we're going to look for, um, bonding on either one of these, I would like to see exempted any project that has, um, already started through the process.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Well, this, this, uh, well, the key thing about this is kind of the reverse deal, you know, this whole bonding thing, but keep in mind, we, Urban Renewal District has two empty parcels on Main Street. We have, uh, potential sites, maybe Southern and South Oregon City, which is going to need urban renewal help. Uh, maybe there's a new urban renewal district up on Beaver Creek Road to do industrial sites up there and stuff. So what I'm saying is, are we going to have, if you're thinking about going to the voter every time we have a project come up here? See, and again, somebody said this, but we elected, you know, the city commissioners to make these big decisions. And I just, uh, and I, no, I, and I really, I, I believe in the voter, you know, but I can tell you, how, you know, if we went around this table here right now and added a special on urban renewal, I think there might be some surprises here. And now we want the voter to get it. And we've been at it three, couple of years, three years or whatever, you know? I think that, uh, and I, I agree, I mean, the voters, you know, if they have the knowledge and stuff, great, but I think we don't have the time, because these projects, this one is almost shovel-ready, twelve hundred jobs ready to go. We've got to at least leave this one out of the equation.
Thank you.
Um, I want to, uh, express support for my, um, colleagues, um, and I, I want to just space on something Commissioner Smith said and something, and what Commissioner Yates proposed. Um, Commissioner Smith, um, suggested that May is too soon on a bonding, um, measure. Um, and I want to ask, um, Commissioner Yates, um, is there something about your proposal, um, that would be time-sensitive for May, or would you be amenable to having your proposal be part of the ongoing discussion that Commissioner Smith has proposed? Um, um, we would obviously take this beyond May, and I'm just wondering if there's any time sensitivity to your suggestion.
The, the, the reason I made the suggestion is, one, I agree that process is important, and when you make an amendment to a charter, it really ought to be done carefully. So if there was an error, quote unquote, in a charter amendment and it was adopted in May, it's really hard to fix. Um, if you have a vote on the Tenth Amendment and, uh, it was turned down or adopted by voters, the city commission would have the authority, without changing the charter, to overrule that at the very next meeting. The city commission with a three to five, you know, with a three to two vote, or five to seven, could ignore that vote of the people, because it didn't, because we didn't amend the charter. All we did was have a vote of the people on, it's almost a, without a charter amendment, it's, it's basically a referendum on an idea that this commission has, says, "This is something we'd like to do, we've adopted this amendment, the city commission's adopted the amendment, we're going to run it by the people to make sure that the people also agree with this, and the people are, at least at this point in time, willing to take on a hundred million dollars in tax increment financing bonds to promote the kind of development that's incorporated in, in the amendment." The advantages to me are, I want to give certainty to Center Call, because if it passes in May, then they're home free, basically, because I can't really imagine the city commission overturning it. Um, and if it doesn't pass, at least you've got this certainty there as well. So it, it moves the ball forward, to my mind, quickly, gets over this, I think, sort of festering discussions that have been going on for three years in this community, and that's basically the reason I'm promoting it, and then quickly, so that they can have some certainty. It doesn't preclude talking about, however, and if there's decisions made not to do it quickly, then it seems to me, Center Call can continue to move forward with a number of people, like me, continuing to say, "Well, the people really ought to have a vote on it," and then you're going to have uncertainty for a longer period of time. So it just strikes me that there has been a shift, Doug, since this was adopted three years ago. There has been, it was adopted with a, uh, almost unanimous, I guess this body was five times, ten. It was adopted with unanimous vote on this body, it was adopted with unanimous vote on the commission level, and that has slowly changed over three years. And it seems to me the voters have sort of spoken, in a way, by modifying the political, uh, climate for this idea over time, and that this is some way to put it, to get it quickly, and to have some certainty on studying this issue.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Peterson?
I just want to kind of talk to the point that, and, and piggyback off what Commissioner Mealy said about exempting current projects, is we're really taking two, two projects that we've been working with, and we're changing the rules mid-game, I mean, completely changing them. We're sending a, a huge message out to the business community, that every developer, that we are not a business, we are taking our most powerful tool, urban renewal for economic development, and we're tying its hands behind its back. With every other city that we have to compete head-to-head with, having both hands free to work and, and do what urban renewal was intended to do. And the idea of taking bond, you know, that these bonds out, these tip financing bonds out to people is a wonderful idea in, in its kind of raw form, but when you apply it to practical, real-world situations, it simply means that we will never get bonded debt passed. And I, I'm, it, it's an opinion, but I'm so certain of it at the same time. It's just, not only will we not get bond passed, is, if, I don't even know that we would necessarily get developers investing money to do their due diligence, or even wanting to do due diligence to see if a project, uh, makes sense, or any, any sort of investment in time or money, where they can go across the river, they can go into another jurisdiction, and avoid all of that red tape, all of that uncertainty. I mean, it's, don't, don't get it from the eyes of, of a developer, someone wanting to invest their money. And you can, you can throw your buying house, and you can throw all your earnest money at this house, and, and regardless of what decision you make, and your due diligence pulls back, that owner can change the rules on you mid, mid-game, tell you that your earnest money means nothing, I don't want to sell the house, you have no, no, nothing to, to go back on, that earnest money is gone, and, uh, and that's basically what we're doing to developers or anyone that wants to bring money. And they can go to the house next door, the house across the street, and their earnest money is safe, and they're not going to even look, they're not even going to take a second look at your house. And that is what we're doing with Oregon City.
I don't know what indebtedness we already have, I mean, we could count on some, we've got, uh, a line credit on the cove, we've not indebtedness on this facility here, uh, at all. And I, right away, that amount of indebtedness, I think the differentiation, uh, the difference between having the thirty million that we, that we would have if, if we didn't, uh, if we subjected the additional hundred million to the vote of the people, I don't know if we could take this project or, and I, some might have to know. So I would require, if, if it passes, well, if it passes, there might be good information going to the next commission, city commission.
Um, what commission, what, what information?
Well, if, if, I mean, we're going to put this to, the, the city commission will make the decisions to whether to take this to the vote of the people. I do not know what debt we've incurred at this time.
Oh, okay.
And to have it frozen at the total of the thirty million, I do not know if the Rivers project could go forward then, and that's the information I want.
Um, we have, um, Brian Shandon, Commissioner Yates.
Yeah, I just, uh, this is new here tonight, Mr. Yates, and I, I would clearly suggest, again, this needs to be tabled and discussed in proper process. Uh, this happened before my time, and, uh, I would like to explore this a little more. Uh, I don't give a, is there a motion on the floor here for this?
Yes.
You know, there's, there's no way that, I'm comfortable in addressing that motion right now with the information I've got, happened before my time, glad to explore it, but that's it.
Commissioner Yates?
I just wanted to address your point. Um, the way Ed has drafted this charter amendment we've got before us today, as I understand from what he's discussed, um, he basically exempts the cove, because those are commitments that we've already made. And we, we've signed a document.
I understand that.
And so we're, he, so this, it would have the, what I'm proposing is effectively the same kind of decision to be reached, but not to make it as part of the charter amendment, as, as part of a charter process, and thus has less need, I think, for the kind of in-depth discussion that one would need if you were going to be making an amendment to the charter.
I, I understand that, but the, the fact of the matter is, this is way on us, that any decision would result in, in a project that is already, uh, in, in the planning phase, and the gra, draft development agreement has already been presented, and I wasn't talking about the cove, I was just talking about the total indebtedness we had, and then to find out we had, uh, the indebtedness, additional indebtedness of, I think it's like the twenty million, but the, the additional indebtedness we have on the Rivers project itself, that is see the thirty million, and, uh, that's why I'd like to see the exemption, uh, placed on projects that are, are already in the planning phase. And either, in either form of the amendment, and I'm concerned that the extra hundred million is probably precluded shouldn't really, that's, that's my point.
So, uh, call for the vote?
Excuse me?
Yes.
I don't think that, call any questions, does that apply to staff? With the chair permission, I just, you know, if you went to the Chicago Museum of History forty years ago, and you walked in the entrance, you'd see this big, gigantic, uh, taxidermy of an oversized gorilla they called the Bushman. And I remember there's a booth next to the Bushman, um, and I mean, this thing was enormous, you know, a small kid, the thing was like King Kong, and they sold these t-shirts that said, "If, if I want your opinion, I'll beat it out of you," and it had a picture of the Bushman on the t-shirt. So, I'm not sure when anybody's going to ask me. So, I'm really eager, of course, to talk about my opinion on this, but one of the things that, that's kind of screaming out, that I feel a professional obligation to mention is that I haven't studied, I think what's wrong here, if, if there's something wrong with the process, is that normally your commission, any commission, would have a work session or a series of those, there would be outside consulting services brought to bear on this kind of thing, and I, it feels like some of you have enough experience with the urban renewal process in Oregon City, that have really strong opinions and probably informed analysis in your own minds already about that, and as, as a policy advisor, I, I feel right now that I cannot advise you either way on, on that, and I'm concerned about, whatever we do, when all the voting and debating and speaking is done, you know, at the policy level, the staff and I have to be able to make this thing work for you. And so, if the developer comes in and, and, you know, some say they won't come in, some say they will, and I say, "I don't know," I know when they come in, they're going to have questions, and one of those questions is going to be, um, how, how will this affect my project, when does a vote matter, how far along do I have to be before there's a vote? There's a lot of operational things on the ground that I would need to, to be able to convey to them clearly, if you want urban renewal to, to work effectively. And so, sometimes it feels like there were, I, I've heard some of that same discontent over my ten months here about some of the decisions that were made with urban renewal, and a part of me thinks that a lot of the debate we're having right now is about those decisions themselves, and whether they were prudent, and whether people felt included, uh, in those decisions, as opposed to, the process is broken and we should all vote. I don't, I don't know, but, you know, I wasn't here, but I can only say that it sort of feels like some of the discontent about the decisions themselves may be what's driving, uh, the discussion, and, uh, deep breath and just understanding more about the impacts on the ground. I need to be able to figure that out, so that when we make it, when we're done, I have something I can work with on, you know, the half, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McSita?
Um, I like to, um, as I mentioned, support colleagues and be supported by colleagues, and I want to express to Phil, um, um, those kind of creative ideas are really wild, really wanting to come on this board, so thank you for raising that. Um, I, I, um, I, I do think that, um, um, that, um, given the discussion that's taken place, um, I think that, um, that, um, whereas some people have, have asserted that this is a measure that, um, we brought forth as a commission, and that Mr. Sullivan has drafted, was, was brought forth in a too complicated manner, I think, um, for the idea that you've proposed, um, given that the deadline for getting something on the ballot is like, you know, a week or, week and a half, you know, that, um, that my preference would be to, um, engage in that discussion as part of what Commissioner Smith has recommended, as a more involved, overall discussion. But, but again, I think it's a very compelling idea. Um, I, I don't want to, um, you know, withdraw my second because I wanted to support you with your idea, but, um, I, I'll probably vote not to, vote with the forward of the recommendation.
Commissioner, Peter?
I think that the tenth plan that's been out there is really old. It's, uh, based upon many obsolete thoughts and directions that have been out there for a long time, and, uh, the city and the world has changed, the, the collective energy is different than what it was, and we have eighty percent of our people community from Oregon City that have been buying houses in the last ten years, fifteen to twenty miles to find jobs, and that's wrong, that's not sustainable, that's bad thinking. And we really got to come back to being smarter than we've been, and I think we need to take a look at the whole plan, and maybe what Phil is proposing here is to, is a wake-up call, say, "Let's, uh, let's get the full plan explained, let's make sure that we have people that, that understand the direction where, hey, is it, uh, is it the direction we want to go? Uh, is it all justified?" And maybe now is the time to, uh, to revoke the plan, I would, I would even like to see an agenda item, I was a little nervous of proposing it earlier, but where we really review the plan. And I really like what Nancy has asked, uh, for us to get some of the new facts, I, I know Charlie Stevenson, I think everybody will be impressed, uh, he is a, a very astute person and can give us a, a new vision as to what is happening in this world, and, uh, I think that a lot of the people here in Oregon City deserve, uh, that type of explanation based upon somebody that is really authoritative, uh, with information as possible. Anyway, I, I, I would, I want to see, uh, a vote on this, uh, because I think a referendum out in front of the people is, uh, is a positive step to getting people to understand, hey, maybe we need to take a good, serious look at what we're doing and making sure it's right, yet at the same time not put all of the pressure on the Rivers project, where it still, uh, needs to meet a lot of goals. I've got real serious concerns about the... I've got real serious concerns about protecting the city and the citizens from losses associated with the, with this property and that's another statement that you come along with, and I, where we're bringing in, uh, other people from DEQ. I want to understand those implications before any of us, uh, really hit ourselves off onto some of the contingency. Because if the, if, if the rivers can meet all the things, all of the, I, I find myself really hard-pressed to ever say no. That's the very honest way. I want the jobs, uh, I want responsible to vote, but I don't want it to be on the backs of the citizens of Oregon City. And, and I want to make sure that you're not paying additional taxes as a result of bad decisions being made. And, uh, uh, you have, we all have to, all of us that understand urban renewal and financing and know that no revenue is going to be coming into government aid of those obligations created by development. Hey, we gotta get that identified, and that's responsible. Anyway, my, my opinion is let's, uh, vote on the plan.
Commissioner Nocina.
Yeah, I, both, um, Commissioner Walters and, uh, Commissioner Edgar have mentioned Mr. Stevens, and without really explaining who he is, and I just wanted to point out that, uh, Charlie Stevens is a, is a, um, um, a policy, a public policy analyst, with the Northwestern ones for energy alternatives, but his expertise in matters goes far beyond energy. It extends to monetary policy and, and the retail economy, and, uh, and he's also a local, which is important, and he's a member of, um, the group in, uh, in, um, unincorporated Clackamas County called Urban Renewal. So, he is, um, very active in the community at the grassroots level also, so just some, some more background on Mr. Stevens. Um, so I, I believe, um, Commissioner Neely, Mayor Neely called the question. Commissioner Yates' uh, um, uh, proposal, so you might want to go ahead and go around it.
Are we ready to vote? Can you read the?
If I guess it's right, uh, vote on the urban renewal plan amendment, um, for a hundred and thirty million dollar bonds in, in May.
A hundred million?
No. On the tenth amendment.
It's the tenth amendment.
The tenth, the urban renewal, tenth amendment plan.
You can leave out the bond.
Okay.
Bring up the vote.
But you're asking for the change that was made, putting the thirty to the hundred million, right? So, you're talking about a hundred million, I think, not the thirty.
Oh, I'm talking about the tenth amendment.
Yes, yes, tenth million.
The tenth amendment.
With the property exemptions for, probably exemptions for the code and other obligations we've already gained.
Come on, that's so.
Mission.
Can I, can I ask Mr. Sullivan again to, um, hold it slow, so, um, uh, we're, we're considering the, the latest urban plan that authorized the hundred million, the hundred, was a hundred million dollar, um, increase? Yes.
If this is an additional?
We're, we're, we're taking a vote to?
Make a recommendation to the commission that this amendment, the tenth amendment, be referred. That's what I understand.
Oh, refer to the people, okay, okay, all right, thank you, thank you, that's what I was.
Just for clarification, that, that the tenth amendment increases the bond indebtedness from thirty to a hundred and thirty? So, you would, that's the hundred million that you reduce?
Okay.
It also identifies several projects that were based on two plans, economic development plans that the former Urban Renewal Commission approved, in oh four and oh six. So, you might want to know what those plans are. You might want to know what the project is.
But if we are talking about taking a fresh look at the plan and referring some to the voters, my sense is that we probably give them the best offer that we can based on what we, what we can put forward, and, and would, would we spend, you know, another election, um, if we come up with plan amendments and then refer them to the voters again, wouldn't we be going through two election cycles, um, to accomplish essentially the same thing? So, I guess I'm kind of wondering what the value is, um, if we can take the time to have further discussions.
I make.
Yeah, the question's been talked.
Whatever recommendation you make, I will have to look at it, and I will have to make a separate recommendation to the commission.
And my motion was in response to a charter amendment, which was before the commission, which I wasn't prepared to vote for because of the process reasons that have been raised in terms of making a charter amendment process. My amendment was to avoid that process problem and get to the vote, get to the substance of what we're talking about here.
So, the seat to the charter amendment that we currently have, Paul?
Yeah, basically.
Since we're going on, you know, for the question, I don't know. You, you know, I, I believe the majority of us cannot tell anybody what the tenth amendment includes, and I think we better make sure that we, before we vote on it.
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, are we ready?
Commissioner Roth?
His name.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nocina?
No.
Commissioner Mom?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
No.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Shaw?
Nope.
Commissioner Gates?
Yes.
Commissioner Edgar?
Yes.
And Chair Walters?
No.
Seven, no, two, yes, one, abstain.
Okay, so, we're moving on to agenda item five C.
Oh, hey, what happened to you? No, I don't think we're finished.
You said the chart, that was in lieu of the charter amendment, you said.
Since it failed, we're back to the charter.
Oh, we're still on, oh, so since, we're back on the charter amendment?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, well, I think the motion that we don't, that we recommend that we, uh, the city commission does not.
You put the?
Yes, thank you.
Call for the vote?
You're, you're, could you clarify that?
It said deferred this, deferred, deferred the discussion, in other words, not to make a recommendation at all.
Do, do we need to even take a vote on that if we're not taking any action?
The motion's made in second here.
Commissioner Roth? Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nocina?
Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm, the, the way the vote is going, I'm totally confused.
I do, too.
It seems, it seems that Commissioner Smith has voted against what he was advocating for.
Uh, we vote, we vote on this, or we're gonna be? I, I think the motion is not to make a recommendation.
Yes, not to make a recommendation.
To the city commission. I started.
I'll start again. Commissioner Roth?
To not, to not saying, because I don't know. Or not make the recommendation.
The motion is to not make a recommendation to the city commission.
I'll vote yes.
Not to make. And Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocina?
No.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Gates?
No.
Commissioner Edgar?
No.
And Chair Walters?
Yes, so, we have, um, seven, yes, and three noes. We've been asked to take a short break, um, before we move on to item C. Come back at, um, in ten minutes. Ending the, uh, the meeting, Urban Renewal Commission. I think everybody's here. Okay, so, we're on agenda item five C, Urban Renewal Commission Consultant. Is there staff report?
No, there's not a staff report, we do not currently have a consultant, our consultant, our former consultant is a Zeland and Associates, their contract ended January first, so you do not currently have a consultant. Uh, if you want a consultant, we will go find one for you.
I would see, Mr. Byme.
Yeah, okay.
Well, the mayor grabbed her head, I mean, will you give us? Are they dead?
All of this is just in comments, and if you have your staff, your commission, that's going to be first. Okay, thank you.
What I, what I was going to suggest was that, um, I don't know if we know, uh, what we need a consultant for yet.
You know, I'm.
At this point, you're commissioning the first day.
Well, that's a suggestion for you.
Okay.
Um, one of the things I was thinking about, and I know we've talked about it a few times, is having some sort of, uh, a work session retreat, um, and I was going to propose that we try to arrange that during your work session time so you don't have to give up a weekend or something like that. Um, and if, when you pick a consultant, part of, part of that is that you, you sort of need to know where, what your goals are, because it may affect the type of consultant that you look for, particular skills or experiences that you want that consultant to have based on those goals. So, I think, um, maybe some initial urban renewal training for some of our newer commissioners, uh, maybe all of you as a group, if you'd like that, and then have a goal-setting component where you can talk about those goals and work through that process. And we would probably get a facilitator for that, and we may have, depending on what it looks like you want to accomplish there, we might even try to get a consultant there to advise you about urban renewal, sort of an urban renewal specialist. So, that's one of the things I was going to report in my reports, but since it's on the floor, I thought I, now might be a better time to, to say that.
Commissioner Ecker?
There's a, a person that I've had the option to listen to many times, and he actually came to one of the, uh, sessions here with Oregon City some years back, Joe Courtwright, he's a state economist. We need to really take a good, serious look at, at all of the, uh, assumptions and, uh, based upon the new economic models that we now live within. And I think it would be prudent on the part to actually have Joe Courtwright actually look at this, uh, uh, tenth amendment to the urban renewal plan and give us some insight. Uh, I recently saw some work he did on the Columbia River Crossing, where he identified that there was going to be three and a half billion dollars worth of money to spend in collecting tolls, and that the, that the Columbia River Crossing was going to cost ten billion dollars in actual costs on the public. And they're reflecting it as like a three and a half billion dollar project, and it's, and after Joe went through their numbers, and he really understands, he's, he's an economist to the, to the governor's office, I believe. Uh, but he is well-respected. I think we really need to take a look at a lot of the numbers, and I, and he might be somebody that would really make it easier for us to understand what we're doing and get some of our goals down right, uh, because we need to know how the world has changed.
Commissioner Nocina.
David, what, um, Paul just mentioned, um, triggered a memory in me that you had, you, I don't think, um, Mr. Court, right, the state economist, my recollection is a private economist, and he has a firm called Impressa.
I think that's correct, and I do have the state.
But you said you were bringing a state economist here.
Yes, in fact, that was going to be what I, the only thing I didn't say that I was saving for my reports, I'd have some. Tom Podolsky, who spoke, I think, at, at that big banquet they always had in downtown Portland, it's always on MBI, I always hear it, I can't remember the name, but, thank you. Uh, he was there a couple of weeks ago, he is the person that I have lined up to come speak to our city commission February sixteenth, and we're going to invite our urban renewal commission members to, to join us as well. I'm sure you want to stack into that, um, but he's going to be here on the sixth, so. If, if that makes a difference.
Is, is, is the sixteenth going to be a regular urban renewal commission meeting?
No, it's the regular city commission.
Regular city system.
Yeah, it could be.
We may have, we may have three urban, uh, renewal storefront grant requests on the sixth.
May I, I just mentioned that, uh, we'll be back on the evening of the sixteenth, but I do have some professional commitments out of town, so, I, you're a little bit of a problem, I think, if you're two or five, I think I could make it.
Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll, I'll support what, um, Commissioner Edgar mentioned, um, because I, um, I, I know Mr. Court, Dr. Courtwright's reputation, and I think he would be, um, really good as, as the guest speaker also. I don't know if he can be done in conjunction with, uh, Mr. Petosky. I think you, you said you got, uh, Mr. Petosky for free, and I don't, I doubt Dr. Courtwright, yeah, I doubt, I doubt Dr. Courtwright. Um, but, um, um, so, I, I think, Paul, that I would, I would, um, definitely consider Dr. Courtwright, um, in that, you know, assembly of, of potential candidates for consultants. Um, and I, and I agree with David and, um, and Doug that it kind of depends on, on what our goals are going to be and where we decide to go. Um, I can see a consultant, um, focusing on a number of areas, like the, the, the macroeconomics, um, also, um, just kind of like the urban design and planning part also. Um, and then, you know, the, the deal review of, you know, particular projects and whether they're in the public interest. I, I doubt, I don't think, you know, we will get that skill set in one person. So, I think we might have some choices to make, but, but I think we need to start thinking about, um, um, you know, which one of, which one of those skills we, we need to use the most at this time. So, um, I'm, it's probably not going to be done tonight, but I just encourage, um, you know, the commissioners to, to think about that.
Do we have anybody working pro formas, um, on urban renewal revenues?
Yes, we do, we still have Andy Parkinson, he's updating his, uh, report based on some new information he got from the assessor a month or so ago, and we're supposed to have a draft of that for you any day now.
Is he still on contract?
Yes.
What, what is his contract run?
I think it's just about finished, I don't, I can't tell you offhand.
Can we have, can we have the information as something ten-point font or bigger?
Yeah, thank you.
Ordinarily, when we choose a consultant for our city services, we go through an RMP or RFP process. And so, we're, that's not a problem to invite people to be guest speakers, but if you're actually going to have them on a retain, we have to go through that, that, that state process.
Yeah.
So, um, right now, we have Mr. Bortz lined up, we, well, we don't have him yet, but we're going to be working on that. And then we have a request that Mr. Stevens come, and then we have Tom Podolsky coming, um, and C H two and Hill in DEQ. So, we have a lot of invitees, uh, I don't know how many words we have to give out, but we've got a lot of invitees, so. If you're gonna, I, I would like to, for you to be thinking about whether or not you want to have sort of a training work session retreat. I don't like to call it a retreat because we're not going anywhere over here, but, but I do think it would be helpful probably to have that. Um, and to what degree, I know some of you are pretty experienced with urban renewal, and some of you are brand new at it, and I just want you to feel comfortable that, that you've had the right kind of training.
I, I'd like to have that before we define our requirements for the new consulting agreement.
Yes. So, we will start working on that as well as the invitees, and, um.
I'm sorry, I put together words. You took my word, the word's right out of my mouth, I was going to say, that's great. Um, and there's a lot of people, if, if it's, uh, the topic instead of the person, I don't know if all the people can be contacted. Is that going to be okay with you guys? Um, because it seems like there's a lot of people that have been requested to be here, I don't know. I just don't want to slow the process down if people aren't available in the next couple of weeks or whatever, when we have our little work session.
When, when is the next date that the commission, the urban renewal commission meets in a formal meeting?
Uh, February sixteenth.
It is sixteenth, okay.
And, and just, uh, go by now, um, could you give some clarification again on when you want it?
can we give some clarification again on when you wanted to meet with these folks? The timing, because we've now mentioned a work session and setting goals would seem, to me, would seem like a really important thing. And then, and so maybe some direction on the timing on that. And also, from a staff perspective, if you could tell us what the topic is that you want to be addressed instead of just giving us names, that, that's helpful because, you know, being in the business, we know people that have expertise in these different areas rather than, you know, an acquaintance or a friend or someone.
Well, I think, I think we've already decided that we, you said we have enough information on DEQ. As far as Mr. Stevens, as I requested, that he'd come and speak to us. It would be in the area of job creation relative to the proposed Rivers Project and about tax revenues and the, I guess, the economic effects of the river's development.
Because as, as the city manager mentioned, we do have Andy Parkinson writing that analysis right now in terms of the increment created from the river.
Right, and that's project specific.
Yeah.
I think that it would be more looking at it from a community perspective.
And, and then I'll also say that my preference, I want, I, I don't know if, if, if I'm interested in having an over reliance on prior consultants because, I mean, just personally, I'm really interested in a fresh look at everything. And, I mean, just having the new commissioners is, is part of that and and because I've been in the development community also, I have, you know, people that I think are good as well and, you know, I might be able to make some adjustments. Maybe a couple to the city manager. But I think there is a decision on whether, on what February sixteenth is going to be. Because I, I think there, you say there will likely be some storefront grants at that time, so there's a.
We have three.
It will be on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. How long do you think that will take?
That's up to you.
So maybe we should do the storefront grants the next time and then do a work session or training on in March.
Well, let me, let me ask first Mayor Neely, when did you want the Centacal developers to present?
The only, the only thing I was going to do was simply make the invitation for them to make a presentation.
And you want to, you want to talk to them when?
That's right.
Okay, all right. And to Nancy, when you had mentioned a work session, did you have a date?
Well, I guess, coming from my perspective, I've heard numerous presentations from the developer. And I haven't heard presentations from anybody who, you know, might be able to speak to some of the claims that the developer makes. And so I would say, for my benefit and all of our benefit, it would be nice to have a different perspective and then be able to integrate those perspectives afterwards. Because we've continuously been presented with the same information.
So it sounds like since, since you were speaking in a broader, you weren't speaking, for example, for Mr. Stevens specifically about the rivers, but the broader economic.
I think within the context of the river's proposal, it's, it's critical that we have this conversation.
Okay, so would you be amenable to having Mr. Stevens on the sixteenth?
I would. Yes, I would prefer, I would prefer that we have Mr. Stevens speak to us before we consider any movement on the rivers.
Okay, so can we have it as a target to invite Mr. Stevens on the sixteenth also?
Yes, yes, but the aggression, I just want to reinforce the rest of the commissioners. If that's what you want us to do, we already have planned here to invite him as to when. I haven't talked to him. If you know what his calendar is, tell me because I'm not sure he's available. I mean, he would be available, I think, sometime because I, I checked a little bit on him because I had some, one of the commissioners told me about him before, so I think we can get the person here. I just don't know their availability to that, to the date and time, but.
Well, why don't we, why don't we shoot for the sixteenth if he's available?
We'll try for it.
Okay. Um, not PC.
Mayor Neely.
The thing is, I've got no problem at all discussing all features of the river's project when it comes to the course, but I still think it's beneficial to have the draft agreement before us and we can talk about what the pieces are and have people invest those pieces either in some kind of conceptual way that isn't, you know, hasn't even developed. I think, I think having a proposal essentially is what, what would be in hand and not at the basis of this session, you know, the most sensible way to approach it.
What I'm talking about is we've had a lot of back sheets and presentations put forward to us by the developers without a specific proposal. I mean, they have, as much as this has been defined, has been presented by the developers.
And so.
And so all I'm asking for is to have one discussion with one different point of view.
I have no problem with that, but I say that could happen when, when, when the draft agreement is before us and then we can be, then it can be more specific in terms of what those other opinions or whatever they are.
Okay, well, we've had the benefit of having the more generic discussion or what you call it with the developer. But we haven't had the benefit of that discussion in, in more conceptual terms.
He is not all the members of this committee, any more.
That's true. Yeah, I mean, we're a different position.
Yep, and that's what I'm suggesting. We can, we can see that, we can see that in a, a more, let's say, where things are proposed together in terms of the things that are before us because it's going to be affordable with a DDA. And I think that would, that would be helpful and anybody can be brought forward to make, you know, make assessments of it.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, within the broader conversation of our goals and our directions and the economy and some of the, some of the comments that have been made by the new commissioners. I guess I question the value of putting a lot of resources legally and otherwise in preparing the DDA in front of a little bit more general direction on where we want to go with urban renewal.
And I got to agree with, with Doug here. I think if we have some kind of a focus, agenda or bill of some kind like the DDA, you're going to have something that you can kind of push into and pull apart and stuff, but right now we don't have that.
And that's not the conversation that we want to have with, with Mr. Stevens. We're not going through the DDA section by section and discussing the strengths and weaknesses of each condition. We're, what we're talking about is what kind of effect is the rivers likely to have on our community?
We've had this discussion for the last.
We've had this discussion for many years.
Well, I guess, we've, we've had a one-sided conversation with the developer for many years and so all I'm asking for is another perspective coming from somebody with public policy experience. And if the Cascade Policy Institute, I, I personally believe that Mr. Stevens can inform us in ways that we haven't been informed previously. Yes.
If I might, Madam Chair, just to kind of get back a little bit to your agenda here, where it's an urban renewal commission consultant. We've got some guests here that are, that we're going to invite on your behalf, at your direction, that aren't consult, we're not going to be using them as paid consultants, so they won't be going through the RFQ, RFP process. So we'll go ahead and invite them as you've requested. As far as choosing a consultant, you might not have to, the feeling I have is that you might not want to make that decision tonight because you haven't had your goal setting, so. Can we maybe just suggest that you hold that over until a later date when the commission's ready to make that decision and then, of course, we'll get the qualifications out there about what it is you're looking for, some of the things you're bringing up tonight versus what some other people might think are important. We'll put that all into the matrix and try to figure out what we want to say about RFQ. Can I?
I want to give a polite statement.
Congratulations.
Okay. I absolutely agree. I think we need direction, a plan before we start talking about consultant, but just going back to having, having Mr. Stevens specifically talk about the rivers. I just, I have, I don't want to say I don't know what his slant is, but I would prefer that analysis or verification to come from maybe a neutral party that's the staff, the staff picks. Because I, I don't know Charlie Stevens with Urban Green, what, if he has a a dislike of large.
Does that apply to all presentations now? Is that, is that the criteria that we're saying?
Well, we're, what we're talking about is, is their independent verification of the jobs, I'm assuming the jobs number, the, the, you know, the economic impact of that kind of project and we've only heard that from the developer. So let's get, I think what we really want is just an independent verification or an independent observation or analysis of that information. And I would, and I'm not saying that Mr. Stevens is or isn't slanted in one direction. But it, but I would just, I would allow the staff to come up with that, that independent.
Okay, well, first of all, as far as independence, if you're talking about independence, independence from what? I mean, there's financial gain here that you cannot segregate from the developer. That's not independence. You've got, you know, developer with a very specific proposal and goal that is not neutral. So, you know, I just ask you to apply the same measure when you're talking about one position versus another.
Yeah. Well, what I'm saying about, I'm not there for having Mr. Stevens come and talk. But if we're specific to verification of river's numbers, having a very independent look at that. We can have, I want a qualitative, quantitative, unbiased analysis, unbiased analysis of what we've heard so far from the rivers and then we can have more of a.
You know, that's, that's a whole different, you know, we were talking about consulting agreements here. All we've asked for is to have a conversation. And if you're talking about independence, I think that this individual is independent of this process, that they haven't been, I don't think they have any role in this process. I think that's pretty independent. I think he's well respected. I'd be willing to.
I haven't done any research on him and I, I'm not saying that he is or isn't. Just a consideration.
We're intentional. We're just having our discussion first. We have, we have people listening to come in, citizens listening afterwards. We're just having our internal discussion first.
Mr. Ecker.
This kind of comes back again to, to the economist, Dr. Joe Courtwright. He's had a person who was truly independent. He's been working for the governor's office. And I went to this, the city club presentation on the state and the economy of the state. Talked with, with that economist that David Braser was talking about. And it's really a generalizations. And as, when I sat through his presentation, you, it was all his plan too. Whereas Dr. Courtwright is, would, could really take apart our urban renewal plan, where, where we've been spending our money. How does it really apply to this day's world? And he is, and has been accepted by virtually everyone, including the state legislator, one of the premier economists of, of the state of Oregon, and he's totally knowledgeable. And, and we really need to get down to the facts of what we're doing. Does it make sense? Is it, is it, is the economics of it really what we want? And I just think that it would be worth our money to pay to have Dr. Courtwright do a real serious study of where we've been and where we're going and make sure that it's on solid ground. I, I've been very questioned, been questioning that for a long time.
Appreciate it.
We've been talking about several things. One is what's the direction for urban renewal commission, just in terms of you know, and I know, I know Charlie Stevens not really well, but I hired him as an internship officer and I've heard him talk a couple of times. I think I know where he's going to come from. It seems to me if you have somebody like Charlie Stevens here, you really ought to have somebody from the Cascade Policy Institute or something like that from the other side of the political spectrum. And I think that would be informative for us to get a overview of the pros and cons of urban renewal. I mean, that's a basic, you know, and do we have a consensus on this body of moving forward in the same direction that we've been moving forward in? And that's sort of issue number one. Issue number two is whether you have a consultant and, and then from that come up with an informed set of guidelines or objectives. And then once you determine what your guidelines and objectives are, you can hire your consultant to help you achieve those. So that seems to me to be the step. And what I'm concerned about, and the reason I advocated putting a vote on the, on the thing in May was I'd like to see some certainty because I'd seem to me if you're, if you want to encourage developers to take advantage of urban renewal, then you need to have some certainty. You've got to have some good guidelines. And the question I have is, when is this DDA coming? And when do these decisions need to be made by this group and by the city commission? What is the timeline for a decision from the commission and a decision from us?
That's a really good question that I wish I had an answer to. I mean, I think it would be easy enough to determine the answer once we get the DDA. The DDA, the draft has been in Centacal's hands for some time now and I can't, I mean, I, I don't, I have access to their thought process or their playbook. If I, if I did, I could answer that question. I just don't know when they're going to come back with, with the DDA.
And I guess the, the real question for this body is how much of this soul searching do we want to engage in before we go on to setting our goals, moving forward in one direction or another? So I don't know the answer to that because I don't know what people feel like. It sounds like some people want to move in a different direction. I'm not sure that that's a consistent, consistent view here at all. But how long do we want to explore that for? How many meetings?
I just want to clarify one thing on the, the DDA. We have a draft DDA that's missing some exhibits. So it's close. And Mr. Bruning has said that he has a stopping point and told him it gets a better idea of where the commissions are. That's what he's told me. So, you know, it's, I think he's waiting for some level of confidence from the commission before it continues. But, but we're close to a, to a final draft.
So if we spin our wheels here for two or three months trying to figure out what direction we're going to go in, the DDA may not come to us in that period of time or it might.
Depends what you want. I mean, like I say, we have a draft that's, that's, at least the verbiage is, is complete. It's missing some exhibits. Like, like a site plan, which is a major thing.
You asked for the DDA on the sixteenth, he could get it.
I think he should be right now.
Oh, and he's from the, from the developer, from the.
Yeah, I have a draft right now.
No, I'm asking her, if they submitted for approval, that's my question.
Uh, no.
And when are you going to do that?
The one thing we do, he, he, if that project goes forward, he wants to do this. Right. Hey, one thing we do, he, he, that project goes forward, he wants to do this, he starts the same time the judgment was being, uh, to minimize the impact of, of something else.
Yeah, it's supposed to be completed spring of 2012.
I don't think he has to run the day the judgment to start, I suppose. So there's, I guess we have to ask him, but if he raises the DDA before us, then we'll be able to make some informed decisions.
Commissioner Ma. Hi. We've been all over the map with this one, haven't we? I would strongly suggest that we do a training and, um, kind of focus on the rest of this later. I would hate to pay somebody to take our urban renewal project away apart if we are able to do that with the help of all of our expert urban renewal commissioners. Maybe we can just take a look at that whole urban renewal plan and, and look at it and see. So I would suggest we do a training.
So I, what I heard is, um, Commissioner Mumm has recommended or suggested that we should bring the DDA forward sooner, as soon as possible. And Commissioner Ma has suggested that we have some training, um, some kind of work session and then consider our next actions. Um, I, I have a preference for Commissioner Ma's suggestion. Do we have any consensus?
I, I like the training, but I want the DDA to proceed.
Right.
I don't want to see this held up, but we do need the training, but we also need the DDA to move on.
Yeah, move, side by side.
I'm going to say this one more time, but we do not have the authority to dictate to the developer when they're going to get those exhibits and get their proposal in front of us. We, as soon as I get it, the day I get it, the moment I get it, you will know that I've got it. They will come to it before you for analysis. But, you know, I can, if the commission would like, I can send another note to the developer and say, please, they're anxious to see your response. If you want me to do that, I can do that. But I think they know that the ball's in their court.
I'm going to say, I guess that I'm going to say that on the 16th, I'm going to put forward, I'm going to invite them to bring the DDA forward.
Hello, Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to see that also that on March 8th, it's a city commission work session. And we have scheduled a training by the League of Oregon Cities for our city commission. And we intend to, uh, invite the urban renewal commission and the planning commission to that training as well. It's a, it's a, it's a general, um, training on being a, a counselor commissioner. And, um, he will be here in a demonstration on that as well. It's not specific to urban renewal, but it's specific to running a meeting and rules of, rules of procedure and so forth. Just wanted to let you all know about that, March 8th.
Terrific. So where does it leave us? Um, well, um, do we have members of the public who are interested? I've got three names here. Um, I've got Mike Bradbury, William Gifford, and followed by Dan Holiday.
If, if. If you, if you had Dan Holiday come, come before, Dan Fowler, we're going to have those two in the seat.
Trying to understand the, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. And trying to, uh, understand some of the, uh, sociological impacts of, of some of the things that are being proposed. I was contacting Workforce Oregon, used to be called the Department of Employment, to try to get some numbers on what the unemployment situation is in Oregon, in Clackamas County, in Oregon City specifically. And they are, uh, providing some numbers for me. But I asked them also if they could do, um, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my notes on what it's called, but it's a, it's a labor market. Yeah, but it's like, it's an L B, some string of letters, but it talks about the analysis of the market insofar as, uh, labor analysis. And for that, they needed all sorts of, uh, what are the types of construction jobs, for example, that are proposed and all this and all that. And, and so I, I told them I, I hope that I might be able to get that for them. And they wrote back and they said, oh, look what we found. We found that there has already been that reported and done. We already have a market analysis for you and we have all those numbers. And, uh, we don't think that we need to redo it for you. It's already done. I asked, well, you know, where's that from? And I'm going to use the L word and, you know, take it for what it's worth. But they said the Leland Report already has all of the statistics that are broken down. They look very objective. And I said, can you give us a letter supporting your, your analysis of the Leland Report? And, and I haven't heard back from them yet. But what I'm suggesting is that if you want really objective statistical analysis, um, the, the state has a whole department that our tax dollars paid for already. That we might not have to hire a consultant to do that. I'm just, I'm just offering that as a, as a possibility that we could maybe save some, some of our money and use the the rest of Oregon taxpayer money to, to get some statistical analysis on that. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Dan Fowler, Oregon City. Um, in the past, I've always said, if you want to control property, after one or two things, you either own it or zone it. Um, and this is kind of a classic case. And it doesn't mean that, that I or you or we, um, don't have ideas of what we would do if it was our property. You know, and that what we would want to see there. That all, sometimes isn't our role. Even though when we get in a situation of an urban agency, we think, oh, we can take this and change it. But, you know, sometimes I think, how does Parker think about all those things that you're thinking or, you know, doing and what are we saying and stuff? And, and so, cause he owns it. And he's got a person who wants it and they're working on plans asking for our money.
Yeah.
That's right. And so you do have a right to have a development agreement and set conditions. And I don't think that's a good thing. I, I really do. You have the right to do that. But the other part that I want to refer to really is the zone. The zoning, it has a zoning, but also if we think we're going to move into a different paradigm or move to a different, um, use or that type of thing, then where's our biggest document to look at? It's our comprehensive plan. Well, what does our comprehensive plan say for downtown Oregon City? Goal 2.2, develop the downtown area, which includes the historic downtown area, the north end of downtown, Clackamas Cove, the end of the Oregon Trail as a place for shopping, living, working, culture, and recreational activities and social interaction. That's 2.2, including policy number 2.24. Target public infrastructure investments and create public and private partnerships to leverage maximum benefit from public investment. Talked about the Wilsonville deal earlier tonight, $100 million, 175 jobs. We're talking about 17.6 million for 1,500 jobs. That's pretty good leverage. Maximize leverage, um, of partnerships to leverage maximum benefit from public investment and to help ensure that the regional center develops to its maximum capacity and realizes its full potential. Goal number 9.5, retail service, allowing a variety of retail outlets and shopping areas to meet the needs of the community and, and nearby rural areas. That's what our comprehensive plan says. Now, if we're thinking we've got a new idea, okay, ideas are the easy part. Details are the hard part. We have to change our comprehensive plan to match those ideas. So a lot said, but I think we've got two things going on. One, we have somebody who owns it and we have these guiding principles. Right now I see those matching up pretty well. Doesn't mean we don't hold them accountable, make it safe, do it right, connect it right, design it right. But those two are kind of matching up. That's what I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't know, I don't know that anyone here has suggested, um, any kind of new ideas that would affect the comprehensive plan. I, I haven't considered, um, anything that exotic. Uh, my, I, I, I personally feel that the, the plan is comprehensive and I don't have an issue with, uh, with what it says at the moment. Got, uh, Dan Holiday, again?
Sorry, it's getting too late. I can't see what I might want. Uh, so I'm Dan Holiday. I live in Oregon City. Um, I, I guess the, and I'm going to speak directly to the, uh, to the actual agenda item, which is consultants. It's, it's real easy to come in as, you know, a new regime, a new, you know, balance of power and say, oh, well, all, all those people they've used before are bad. Or because, because, because you don't agree with the plan that came before, those people must be bad, those consultants, whoever they might be. Um, I, I would encourage you to, um, to carefully look at the qualifications of the folks that you've used in the past and not try to reinvent the wheel because there's a ton of work that's been done that's another set of consultants or another consultant can't come in and just duplicate. Cause you're going to pay for it again. And so that's an important step. And to say that Mr. Stevens is unbiased when he has already waited publicly in the newspapers on this project is a little disingenuous at best.
I did not say unbiased. I said he was independent.
Tomato, tomato. Uh, you know, I, I, um, the, the last point I want to make is that it, it is, it is apparent to me that there are people on this commission, and I, I am not going to name names, but have a personal issue with Mr. Bruning and it's not just a project issue. And I would encourage you that if you cannot separate your personal feelings for a particular individual, um, from project, then you need to recuse yourself from this decision. And that's all I ask.
Thank you.
My name's Aaron Olson. I live in Oregon City. Uh, I just want to, I guess he's leaving. Yeah, I just want to reply to some of the comments that were made by the commission. Uh, I just want to reinforce the importance of objectivity. Uh, as I've been listening to folks tonight, uh, talk on a number of subjects. Uh, I, I sense there's certain factions within the commission itself. And as a citizen and a resident of Oregon City, I'm, I'm hoping that you all can be objective in having a criteria for who you have appear before you and provide you in, information. It needs to be authenticated and it needs to be validated. And, uh, we, we do not want to skew the information for an agenda. No matter, no matter how it, uh, it ends up. I mean, if you follow the criteria, uh, look at the objectives and if it's in the best interest of Oregon City, you'll know what decision to make. You really will. And, and I will back any of you and all of you as a, uh, citizen of Oregon City. But let's just be, let's agree upon the, uh, criteria. And I would strongly encourage you to have the developer appear before you, this body, and make your pitch. And then if there's any, uh, concerns, if there's any issues, address them on the spot. And let's have closure. Let's have closure on this one way or the other, instead of just having it drag out and spend three hours in your evening having ambiguity. Because I, I know you all like to have, uh, uh, comprehensive action. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, I think there's about, uh, 40 questions now that have been, um, compiled by, uh, neighbors and park place neighborhoods that have never been answered. They've been in existence since last fall. So, um, as far as being objective and having criteria, I couldn't agree more.
Well, I, I would simply say this question's having an answer because we haven't had a developer here to answer it. Did you all speak?
I have another speaker, Tom Guile.
Okay.
Come on, Tom.
Um, Tom, I'm going to say, I swear I wasn't going to say anything tonight. Um, but I just keep hearing, um, literally, I keep hearing all these talks about jobs. And I for one am wondering, as a resident of Oregon City and unemployed, is there a list that's going around that those 1,500 jobs are promised to, promised to residents of Oregon City? I know when I did, had construction in my home here in Oregon City, I couldn't communicate with the people building my home. They came from another area and I couldn't speak their language. But I know that in construction, a lot of people come in and build things and then they leave. The jobs that are going to be resident, going to be down there at the river, it's again, this is not pro, con, the river. I'm just saying, I keep hearing about jobs and I'd like to be first on that list to get one of those jobs. If they're promised Oregon City residents, doesn't mean that they're all going to be here. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, we have another speaker, Rose Holden.
Hi, Rose Holden, Oregon City. I think I want to say about Charlie Stevens that several of you guys have sat in my office and I know Charlie as well as you guys do. And to bring him in to speak about the Rivers project, we all know what he's going to say. You all know what he's going to say. It's not going to be productive. There's no reason to bring Charlie in to speak about the Rivers. If you want to bring him in to speak about peak oil and about the state of our economy and where we're going with the banking industry, that's a whole nother story. But to waste everybody's time bringing him in to talk about retail and the demise of democracy and everything that we know to be true, that's a waste of time. He doesn't support the Rivers. He doesn't support the Cove. And several of you were in my office and when all of this got started. So I just want to call a spade a spade and say, don't be disingenuous in bringing in, under the guise of, you know, explaining things from a different point of view because we all know what he's going to say. Um, the other thing that I think is really important here is I'm a business and a lot of other people that aren't in this room anymore have businesses here in town. And you bring a project into the city of Oregon City like the Rivers and there is a multiplier effect and a, a huge explosion for businesses such as mine and other people's businesses that you can't even begin to count and we won't even know what the effect is for months, years to come. And to stop a project or slow it down or take a chance on losing it before it even gets going is going to really hurt all of the other businesses that we have in Oregon City and on the outskirts and on the, the rural fringe. So I really ask you to take a really hard look at that too. Everything you do, every decision you make about urban renewal and bringing business to Oregon City and economic development affects all of the businesses currently in Oregon City as well.
I want to disclose, I have no idea what you're referring to as far as the conversation. So I don't know, um, what, what the conversation was and I don't know, um, what you were speaking of as far as. Um, I do know that Mr. Stevens has excellent information about, um, net jobs and the effect of the, on the community. Um, if there's somebody else that can speak to that, uh, if, if there's a perceived, um, concern about his information. I mean, I think his information is factual. I think it can, can be fact checked. Um, I could bring the same information, uh, but, um, Okay. Thank you for your opinion. Thank you. And I have a, um, Mr. De Seda.
I, I don't want to, um, condemn and kind of parse somebody who, um, you know, who, if, if someone's a, um, a talented analyst in, in a number of areas, I'm not going to segregate his analysis on what, on, on, in one area. Um, that doesn't make sense to me. But I, I do want to mention, um, Ms. Holden's comments, um, in this regard. Um, I think, um, what strikes me about it, and because I've had this feeling for a long time. I think the comments that what we do regarding to urban renewal affects the whole city like that, I think reveals that we just place way too much emphasis on urban renewal. Um, we just, I think there are other tools out there. There are other strategies to follow. Put, to put so many of our eggs in the urban renewal basket, um, follow, to put, to put so many of our eggs in the urban renewal basket, um, and it is just way too much of an overemphasis on urban renewal. When we had a retreat with, this weekend, um, I, you know, proposed a long list of economic development ideas, uh, that don't depend on urban renewal, and I think we as a city have to take a really hard look as to whether, um, we are way too dependent on this particular tool, uh, for our economic development goals.
I don't move with you. I'm not in terms of a consultant. I just think that's, uh, the city manager, uh, take our opinions and so forth, and perhaps come up with some suggestions as to how to proceed, but I do think it's too premature to come in with a consultant, I think we need to, uh, figure out where we're going a bit more. Well, I can tell you that it's, it's not clear to me what the majority wants right now, because I've heard Mr. Stevens, you know, applauded and, and critiqued and all that, and I don't know him, and I don't know, yeah, didn't even know that he was on the left, and I heard somebody else say, well, then we need somebody from the right, and I don't know who's on the right either. If it were up to me, I would pick somebody who, I didn't know which side of that spectrum they were on, and they were simply, at least in my mind, they were neutral, maybe when they got here, it'd be real obvious they weren't, and I would have been, uh-oh, I did pick somebody neutral. But generally, to give you that kind of advice, I would try to pick someone neutral. So I would like to know if you want me to find somebody way on the right and way on the left, but it's, it's really unusual to have a commission naming, uh, it's okay to invite people, but it's kind of unusual to have, to have a body naming particular individuals, so, you know, we'll work with whatever you want us to do, but right now I'm not clear on what that is.
Strikes me, uh, that David, you could suggest for the training, which I'm probably not going to be here for, unfortunately. Basically, what I, it seems to me what the consensus, what I'm hearing, it may not be consensus, is they want a training, and they need a, and the training ought to, it seems to me, I was going to my first commission meeting, and so I spent an hour or two this afternoon kind of reading critiques on urban renewal, and there are a number. I used to, I really studied this stuff hard about ten years ago, and there's a body of thought, the Cascade Institute is the one that I'm most familiar with, the, the right-wing libertarian body of thought, that says urban renewal is a waste of money, that we're basically given subsidization, and you're taking money away from poor people and putting it into things that benefit rich people, and the basic people landed, uh, class, which is represented well in this room, are the ones in favor of urban renewal, but basically they're taxing the entire population, they end up with these high-end facilities that look good and make politicians happy, and all those kinds of things, but there's a really good, strong economic argument that these, that this is a bad thing to do. Now, I don't really agree with that. I think that there are good things that urban renewal can do, uh, and I reached that conclusion ten years ago, but it's a close call. I mean, it's a really close call, and the same kind of arguments go with, you know, building stadiums for football teams and things like that. They're the close calls, whether these are useful things for municipal governments to do. So I would suggest that we have a training session, and that you address the issue, so should you have urban renewal, should you not have urban renewal? What's, what's the pros, what's the cons? When it screws up like it does at Beaverton, or when it's successful in other places, where's an example of a really slammed-on homerun? And where's a strikeout? And what caused both? That seems to me to be a useful exercise. I'm, if I can't be there, I'm going to be sorry I can't be there, it really would be good to, to have that. But it seems to me, once you have one of those things, you would then reach to, you know, you would poll the commission and see if they want to change direction from the direction they've been going, and my guess is they won't. Um, I'm not sure how, but my guess is this commission would not change its direction, but at least it would be a discussion. And then you'd have a choice to make your goals, and then you can make your, your, your selection for a consultant, if you will, but we really don't want to hire consultants at this point, seeing for me. And I think you could probably get your educational thing for free from people like Charlie Stevens, and I know Charlie very well, I agree with Rose, too, by the way, I don't think his information is going to be particularly useful, because he's a little bit on the extreme side, um, but I think it'd be very useful to have somebody like from the Cascade Institute or Libertarian Group that would say, this is just a bad idea, that Dan should even have a job. But once, once the commission decides that Dan should have a job, then we can move forward and tell him what to do.
Well, until the last couple of minutes there, I'm, I was trying to move this message, but I'm not having things per day to do, if you're not having something to do every day, but, but I think that was a very good explanation of the kind of, the kind of training and retreat that I would, I would suggest to you, because there is this debate in the community, do, I mean, I was talking to commissioners on the break about whether this is about decisions that people didn't like before, about buildings, for example, that don't, uh, create increment like the one we're sitting in, but did that, is it about the decision, is there something wrong with the charter? What, what is the problem we're trying to fix? And I think you really put a consensus, at least in my mind, around what we need to do on this commission to try to help you formulate what your thoughts are moving forward. So, um, the trick for me is doing that in, um, before the sixteenth, the retreat I just finished, we just finished with, took me like three and a half months to put it together. The best people are hard to get on that kind of notice, so, um, why don't, why don't we hold off hiring a consultant, per se, right now, and let us see if we can't put together the training and show both sides, both the, the pros and the cons of urban renewal, get some case studies of where it's really worked well? I mean, you've got your own district here on the health house that I think worked pretty well, we had a district in Grants Pass that I was there for the fun part, not the controversial part, but the fun part, when it actually closed, and I got to go to the school district and hand them a big fat shack, and it wasn't one of those plastic ones like the governor gives out, this is one that you could cash, and I get to do the same thing for the fire, for the fire in the county and all the taxing entities, so there are case studies where it worked well, case studies where it didn't work well, and I think that's a great idea. So with the, with the consent of the commission, and I'll ask you to, maybe raise your hand if you agree with Phil's suggestion and what I'm suggesting, let us design some training in a retreat format and a work study and bring it back to you, and let us pick people that we think are disqualified regardless of where they might be politically. That doesn't mean we can't invite people, though, if you decide you want to do that, I, we already have...
I'd like to hear Charlie.
Okay, so we'll have, we can do that, if that's okay, we'll do that as an invitation, that won't be part of the retreat, but we'll bring in a tenant people.
And I'd like to, I, I don't know that I'd consider, um, Charlie's screaming, but I, I do want to hear the other perspective as well.
Well, I'll have to call Bob Dodd. I'll put aside, I don't know. But at least I have some direction. Can you go to that one, Ben? I did one caveat, I will be, um, I will be out of town from the sixteenth for nine, or I'm sorry, starting February eleventh, I'll be gone for nine days, um, so I won't be here to have your training on the sixteenth, um, but I'll be back in nine days after that.
You have a training in March, so you're back until that.
Technically, it's going to take some, it's going to take a while, I think, to, to get it. Um, and Nancy will probably actually be doing what she does best, which is circulating some ideas for dates, so we can try to make sure as many people are here as possible, and then once we have some dates, we'll start working on getting the right people in.
Yeah, excuse me, uh, you can ask me to put a letter up on their monitors from Rob Crocker, I don't know if you want, did you want...
Yeah, I'm going to ask the city attorney to address that real briefly. Uh, Mr. Crocker has given you a, uh, a notice that he intends, as he says, to appeal, uh, is, uh, as he feels, short-term, uh, on this commission, and, uh, I haven't seen anything further than that. We have given an opinion to the city manager, I believe you have seen a copy, but I hope you have, and let me say this, I'm saying this.
It's on here. It's on here. It's on the, on the, under the city manager.
And, uh, we stand by, and we'll just see what happens. Oh, I just talked to him. My understanding is, is his position ended the end of last year, and I, um, I don't think there's a person who's been wrong in the process. All right, can I move to the jury?
Yes.